Welcome, everyone. Welcome to the National Capital Planning Commission. This is the July 9, 2015, meeting. Please note for everyone in attendance that today's meeting is being livestreamed on the NCPC website. We do have a quorum, so I'll call the meeting to order. And without objection, we will proceed with the agenda that's been publicly advertised. Agenda item number one is the report of the chairman. I don't have any particular report, but I'll make some introductory comments. Since I've been here since October 2009, I think this might be the single largest agenda that I've had. We've got a lot of important, noteworthy, and consequential items on today's agenda. We also have important public testimony to be heard. Because we do have a long agenda, and because we do have public testimony, I will be an ogre today and strictly adhere to the three minutes and the five minutes of the public testimony. We just have -- I don't have a choice but to be fairly strict today. For the commission members, after we get through the ICCB item, we'll have a short break, because we will then endure for the rest. And so I'm hoping the break will be shorter than longer, maybe 30 minutes. I'll get a consensus, but 45 at most, but 30 would be great. I brought micravible soup, if that's any indication. Any questions about the meeting? Agenda item number two is the report of the executive director, Mr. Acosta.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just have a few announcements today. The public comment period for the draft comprehensive plan urban design element concludes today. We invite the public to submit their comments in writing or on our website. NCPC and the D.C. Public Library are holding a Section 106 meeting on July 14 at 1:30 p.m. regarding the renovation of the Martin Luther King Memorial Library. This will be held at the MLK Library. Also, the public is invited to attend. We welcome summer intern Artesha Naidoo, a student at the University of California, Davis. She is studying community and regional development and is working with our Policy and Research Division. I'd also like to express our gratitude to David Levy, who returned to NCPC on interim basis over the last six months to help us with our leadership transition at the Urban Design and Applied Review Division. David served the commission with great distinction during this time, and also over his tenure period in his permanent position at NCPC. So we wish David all the best. Finally, congratulations are in order for NCPC's Policy and Research Director, Michael Sherman. Mike has recently been promoted to the rank of Colonel with the U.S. Army Reserves. He served two combat tours in Iraq and Kuwait, and we thank Mike for his service to the country. And so that concludes my presentation today.
Thank you, Mr. Acosta. On behalf of everyone, our great thanks to David Levy for his continued service, and to Colonel Sherman, congratulations.
Yes, sir.
For his continued service, and to Colonel Sherman, congratulations.
Yes, sir.
Agenda item number -- Agenda item number three is a legislative update. Ms. Skylar?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I do have one item I'm going to report on today. It's the National Mall Revitalization and Designation Act that was introduced by Eleanor Holmes Norton in May of this year. It's been referred to the House Committee on Natural Resources and thereafter the Subcommittee on Federal Lands. The contents of the proposed legislation authorize the commission to modify the boundaries of Area 1 and 2 for commemorative works of the National Mall. And it allows the Secretary or the Administrator, Secretary of Interior Administrator, to submit a recommendation to Congress to terminate the legislative authority for commemorative work before its expiration date if the entity or person authorized to establish this work does not possess the capacity or resources to complete the project before the date. And it also directs NCPC to prepare recommendations for improving the process required for the selection, design, and subject matter of commemorative works, and the Secretary of Interior to submit a plan to enhance cultural experiences in and visitor enjoyment amenities and the vitality of the National Mall.
Mr. Chairman, I missed my opportunity, but I have to go back. I guess I'm thinking I may be one of the few people on the commission that is -- sir, I'm an '06 also, a Colonel retired, and I want to take the opportunity to recognize Mr. Sherman for moving into the '06 category. And I hope he gets four college out the way, because I'd like him to get a star. He ought to get one. But congratulations and thanks for your service.
Indeed. Thank you. Any questions for Ms. Skylar? Agenda item number four is the consent calendar. This is the consent calendar, and we have seven items on the consent calendar, and they are as follows. Agenda item number 4A is the preliminary and final site development plans for site improvements to the triangular property of Pennsylvania and Constitution Avenues northwest of the National Gallery of Art. Agenda item number 4B is the preliminary and final site building plans for the DIAC parking garage replacement at Joint Base Anacostia-Bolling. Agenda item 4C is the final site and building plans for Quantico Middle and High School replacement at Marine Base Quantico. Agenda item 4D is the final real property master plan for Arlington National Cemetery. Agenda item 4E is the final real property master plan for the U.S. Airman's Home National Cemetery. Agenda item 4F is the District of Columbia Capital Improvement Plan for fiscal years 2016 to 2021. And last, agenda item 4G is the transfer of jurisdiction of the Andrew W. Mellon Fountain Triangle Property. Does anyone have any questions on any of these items that you have had before you? Hearing now is their motion on the consent calendar. It's been moved and seconded. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. One abstention. Agenda item number 5A is the Intelligence Community Campus Bethesda Preliminary Master Site Plan. And we have Ms. Lee. And I will note that we will have four people signed up to speak, and each will be given -- each will be given five minutes, strictly five. Ms. Lee, welcome.
Thank you. Good morning, Mr. Chairman and members of the commission. The United States Army Corps of Engineers, on behalf of the Defense Intelligence Agency, has submitted preliminary site development plans for the ICCB master site design. The ICCB is located on Sangamo Road in Bethesda, Maryland. It is about a 30-acre campus located about 3/4 of a mile of the district line and about 1/4 mile east of the Potomac River. As you can see in this graphic here, the site sits about 150 vertical feet above the Potomac River, and the entire western boundary in here is a steep forested land owned by the National Park Service. Here is an overlook at the site. To the west, between the site and the river, is NPS land, and you can see sections of the George Washington Memorial Parkway, McArthur Boulevard, the Clara Barton Parkway, and the Ciano Canal National Historic Park. To the north, there is a school, you can see here, and a local park. To the east, there is a shopping center across Sangamo Road. And beyond the immediate surroundings of the site, there are single-family detached residential neighborhoods with some multifamily. There are residential uses to the south as well, including a new townhome development adjacent to the site. And as you move to the south, Sangamo Road becomes Brooks Lane. As you may know, the site has been a federal facility since 1945, when it served as the headquarters of the Army armed service. Over the last 70 years, the facility grew to approximately 30 acres, and the primary buildings of the site include Erskine, Roberta, Maury, and Aberhold. The site contains about 715,000 square feet of office space and surface parking, including a total of 19 acres of impervious surface, or approximately 67% of the site. The site was vacated by its previous tenant, the National Geospatial Agency. The office of the Director of the National Intelligence is the current owner and is now in the process of redeveloping the site as the new intelligence community campus. As part of that effort, NCPC approved a master plan in February of 2012. And this master plan separated the redevelopment of the site into two phases, north and south campus. The north campus, approved by NCPC in July 2012, includes a multi-level parking facility, a visitor control center, and a vehicle inspection station, and a new entrance driveway along Sangamo Road. The south campus has been divided in phases as well due to funding structure. The first phase included the Centrum project, which NCPC approved in July 2013, and consisted of an infill building that serves as the central circulation spine for the campus. The second phase of the south campus includes the Erskine and Roberta Hall renovations. NCPC approved this project in March 2014. Most recently, the commission approved a pedestrian bridge and walkway connecting the parking garage here with the Centrum building. And the project that is before the commission today is the final phase linking all previous redevelopment efforts into a holistic landscape and stormwater management designed for the entire campus. So the master site design limits of disturbance, covers the area highlighted in red, pulling together previous campus improvements into an integrated landscape, site security, and a stormwater management plan. The project area contains some overlap with previous redevelopment phases, such as the Centrum in this area and the north campus, to capture final revisions, including reconfiguration of the main entry to provide a new Serpentine entrance road aligned with Sentinel Drive to reduce traffic impact, as you can see here in the image. The next series of slides will show us appropriation of the site and how we got here today. In 2008, the campus included over 1,500 surface parking spaces. As you can see, the main open space in the campus consisted of a historic landscape. When you compare this 2008 condition to a proposed plan that I will describe today, you can see how this project has moved in a positive direction, including new green spaces in places of impervious areas. Here is an image from 2012 showing previous conditions. You can see the parking facility under construction in this area. And here is a recent aerial photo showing existing conditions. As you can see, the north campus is already complete. It was completed in 2014. Aberhold was demolished as part of the Centrum project, and the Centrum project building was completed in 2015 along Erskine and Roberta Hall, and the former visitor control center was demolished in 2014. Getting into the proposal, the stormwater concept design goals include: provide a comprehensive stormwater analysis for the entire campus, reduce impervious areas, meet federal and state regulations, and include strategies to detain and treat runoff from the 25-year storm event, which exceeds the minimum 10-year storm quantity control requirement by the Maryland Department of Environment; and the project incorporates sustainable stormwater management strategies, including eliminating over seven acres of existing impervious cover, installing bio-retention areas, grass wells, and underground storage structure in here, and rerouting rooftop runoff from Erskine and Roberta Halls for on-site treatment. I will come back to stormwater in the analysis part of the presentation. Now I will describe the landscape. The design responds to a site natural setting, protects existing specimen trees, integrates recent site improvements to the historic landscape as well as security requirements, and includes heritage interpretive features. The proposal includes two pedestrian entrances, as you can see highlighted in blue, coordinated with existing bus stops, a ceremonial entrance for VIP guests around the historic elliptical driveway, and loading. The planting design corresponds to the surrounding landscape and reestablishes a connection to the mature parkland to the west, and maintains a heavily forested area to screen the sites to the north, as you can see here. In addition, the streetscape along Sangamo Road here is consistent with the Montgomery County Department of Transportation standards. In the lower graphic, you can see the integrated landscape approach, including plantings from different project faces, as well as existing specimen trees. In terms of security, the ICCB includes a complex interior landscape plan to address specific screening and security requirements. The landscape plan is subdivided into 10 zones to develop the overall character of the site. The project aims to comply with DoD Unified Facilities Criteria. The design provides interpretive exhibits to the site history to the public and employees. The interpretive exhibits will be located along Sangamo Road, as you can see in this image, and also within the control perimeter security. The design identifies three areas, as shown here. The streetscape along the campus entry includes an additional buffer of evergreen trees here. These trees are configured to screen headlight glare from vehicles exiting the campus on Dos Sangamo Road to address lighting concerns raised by the community while also allowing for filtered views of the campus. The bio-retention areas consist of low-growing plants with a 6-inch height restriction. The design incorporates an open and colorful landscape for stormwater treatment and includes stone elements to reflect the Potomac River. With respect to community coordination, since March 2014, the applicant has held over 25 public meetings with the community to discuss traffic, landscape, and stormwater management. See Appendix A in the EDR for the applicant's responses to community concerns. Regarding staff analysis, this slide shows the way we structure our review. First, I will focus on stormwater management compliance and some key issues. Second, I will share our comments on the campus landscape. And lastly, I will address conformance with the comprehensive plan and the ICCB master plan. I should note that as part of the review process, we consulted with MDE, EPA, and NPS officials to understand their role in this project and the status of the stormwater management approval process. With respect to local regulations, the Maryland Department of the Environment includes standards for redevelopment and new development. It also includes goals to reduce impervious areas, provide water quality treatment, implement environmental site design to treat runoff to the maximum extent practicable, and provide quantity control for the 10-year storm event. MDE approval process includes three stages: concept, site development, and final. The applicant has submitted stormwater management concept plan to MDE. MDE provided two review comment letters, and the applicant is currently addressing the comments in order to obtain concept approval. Based on our conversations with MDE, we understand that as a result of MDE comments, there will be no substantial changes in the site plan, and the major project components will not be affected. In addition, we understand that the current footprint of the bio-retention areas will change to avoid conflicts with underground utilities and address capacity requirements. We will continue to coordinate with MDE to ensure that this project meets local requirements. Regarding federal regulations, the Energy Independence and Security Act includes goals to retain runoff volume for the 95th percentile rainfall event and use to the maximum extent technically feasible green infrastructure or low-impact development design strategies to meet performance standard. The goal of the ICCB project is to design a stormwater management system to retain the volume of runoff from the 95th percentile rainfall event. To place NCPC requirements within the context of these federal and local stormwater requirements, NCPC requires stormwater management plans at final approval. At preliminary, which is where this project is, we basically want to ensure that the applicant is working with the permitting agency and developing stormwater strategies. It is our understanding that the applicant is working with MDE, so we are generally comfortable with the current submission, since this is a preliminary approval. If you compare these images, you can see that there has been a significant progress in the campus. Seven acres of impervious surface will be replaced with landscape, improving the campus environmental performance and visual presence in the community. For the rest of the stormwater section, I will highlight four particular issues. The first issue deals with detaining versus retaining. In 2012, the commission requested the applicant to include a goal to treat and retain 100% of stormwater for the 25-year storm. Fully retaining stormwater requires containing stormwater on-site without discharge. Technical experts, including the applicant's engineer, as well as MDE and EPA representatives, advised that retaining 100% of stormwater for a 25-year storm is likely to be infeasible due to site and budget constraints. However, the project is designed with a goal to treat and detain the 25-year storm. Detaining is used to temporarily store water so it can be treated and then released at flow rates that are compatible with redevelopment conditions. This meets the regulatory standards, and we are satisfied with this progress. The second issue deals with consolidation of drainage areas 3 and 4, which are these areas. Based on the natural conditions, the site flowed mostly west to the Potomac River, with the exception of the southeast area, which flowed east towards Sangamo Road and Brooks Lane. The site has a number of drainage areas, as you can see. Stormwater runoff discharges from the site to the west via three channels: the northwest outfall, the mid-side outfall, and the southwest outfall. The southwest outfall, which is highlighted, was created by erosion caused by runoff onto a hillside from the southwest portion of the site, which is this drainage area. The proposal eliminates the southwest outfall in accordance with a previous study, which recommended the closure of this outfall to remediate erosion in the hillside. Therefore, the stormwater concept redefines internal drainage area boundaries and consolidates area drainage areas 3 and 4, as you can see here, and rerouting of runoff from the southwest outfall into the existing outfall along Brooks Lane, which discharges to the Montgomery County stormwater system. As part of the review, MDE will evaluate the calculations to ensure that the combination of drainage areas meets MDE standards. We want to note a related project on NPS land. Previous MDE approvals have included a condition which requires the DIA to investigate, design, and construct repairs to downstream channels of the ICCB on the adjacent NPS land. As a first step towards fulfilling the MDE condition, the applicant completed an outfall channel study in April 2013 to establish the impacts of offsite stormwater runoff erosion and sedimentation to adjacent NPS land. Later, in August 2013, the DIA and NPS executed a memorandum of intent for purposes of defining the working relationship between the two agencies for correcting downstream channel erosion on NPS land. We note that the outfall remediation is a separate project, which is not before the commission today. Concerning the landscape, in general, the plan has done a good job blending new and historic elements, strict security and stormwater requirements, and reinforcing the identity of the campus at this unique site. However, we provide the following comments: protect all specimen trees, like the ones highlighted in red, around the drip line during construction, and reduce pavement along Erskine loading dock to provide additional root protection. Minimize the vegetation clearing along the perimeter fence, and eliminate river rock along the required 10 feet clear area on either side of the fence, specifically along the western border. Consider alternative treatments for these sensitive areas, such as store or native ground cover, and consider maintenance given the security constraints. Ensure adequate shade along the pedestrian walkway that connects the parking garage, visitor control center, and Centrum by providing additionally informally arranged trees to provide a more dense vegetation in this area, and minimize irrigation needs by installing water-efficient landscape. Consider additional landscape to screen views and minimize light spill around the garage and vehicle inspection to address community concerns. Staff finds that with regard to the comprehensive plan, the project is consistent with the federal workplace, environment, and transportation elements. These elements contain policies that encourage the federal government to reduce existing buildings, support modernization and repair of existing facilities, use environmental management practices to reduce stormwater runoff and erosion applicable with federal and state requirements, meet the parking ratio, and use structured parking. Lastly, the project is consistent with the NCPC-approved master plan. The master plan included elimination of surface parking, landscape areas along Sangamo Road to screen the building mass and double as bio-retention areas, and maintaining the historical vehicular ellipse. Rather than creating a massive building with a formal landscape like the image, the current proposal maintains the rhythm of existing buildings and responds to the context. The project was reviewed by the Montgomery County Planning Board back in March. The focus of the review was on the proposal's compatibility with the surrounding in areas of landscape, stormwater, and coordination with NPS and the community. The submission package for Montgomery County included two components: the bridge and walkway and the master site design. As I noted earlier, NCPC reviewed the pedestrian walkway and bridge back in January as a separate submission. Regarding the master site design, the planning board raised concerns about the proposed gravel treatment along the western fence and stormwater runoff and flooding along Brooks Lane outfall. With respect to the final comment, which is bullet number seven, regarding flooding on Brooks and Locust Lane, as I mentioned before, MDE will evaluate the stormwater calculations to ensure that the consolidation of drainage areas meets MDE standards. The planning board's comments were considered as part of staff analysis of the project, and please refer to Appendix B in the EDR for the comment letter. To conclude, the executive director's recommendation is for the commission to approve the preliminary site development plans for the ICCB master site design. I will not go over the findings and recommendations, since I already discussed during the presentation, and is also included in the EDR. And request that the applicant provide additional information with the final submission, responses to any comments provided by Montgomery County, final stormwater management plan prepared in accordance with MDE and the commission submission guidelines, and notes that the applicant continues to work with federal and state agencies and the community to address offsite stormwater runoff erosion caused during the previous occupancy of the site, and encourage the applicant to further coordinate with MDE, NPS, and the community on the final master site design. Comments the applicant for developing an integrated landscape solution on the site. With this, I conclude my presentation. I am available for any questions the commission may have. Also, the ICCB team is here to answer any questions.
Thank you, Ms. Lee. I have a couple of questions, just in anticipation of comments and questions on stormwater. Let me ask a couple of questions. One is, we are a reviewing agency; we're not the permitting agency. So can you clarify what our role here is on stormwater?
So according to our submission guidelines, we require a stormwater management plan at final review. So at preliminary, we confirm that the applicant is devising a stormwater management plan and is working with the local regulatory agency. In this case, the applicant has met the basic requirements for preliminary approval.
And I know you've been engaged with MDE on stormwater matters. What are they generally saying at this stage? I know you covered some of this, but I just wanted to highlight it again.
Yes, Mr. Chairman. We have had many conversations with MDE, and it is our understanding that the applicant is working with MDE towards a concept approval. MDE has submitted review comments, and the applicant is making those revisions.
And based on those conversations you've had with MDE and the stormwater proposal currently in the works at this stage, do you expect, or does MDE expect, any significant redesign or big changes to the plan?
No, Mr. Chairman. It is our understanding that the stormwater management plan that is on the review at MDE will not likely result in any major changes above ground to the site.
And then my last question is, because this is a bit of deviation. We had requested, last time around, for there to be 100% retention, and now it is detaining, though it's doing so at the 100-year rather than the 25. Could you talk us through that? That's no small point. Can you talk us through that just a little bit more before we go to public comment?
So, Mr. Chairman, we consulted with EPA, MDE, and the applicant's engineer, and they all agreed that this was likely to be infeasible due to site and budget constraints. And this is beyond federal and state regulations. And this is beyond federal and state regulations, and based on the applicant, retaining 100% of the 25-year storm will require to contain 2.4 million gallons of water on site, and that will imply to change the facilities to a size 10 times larger than what they are.
10 times, okay. Thank you. You may. Yes, Ms. Wright?
That was my one question. When you consulted with the engineers, did they give you, can you give us some idea of, break it down in percentages? How much of the problem or the impossibility of meeting that goal is due to the site versus budget? That's not a totally fair question, so if you can't answer it, I understand. But I'm having a hard time getting the idea.
I think it's both, because, for example, the ESA requirements requires 1.7 inches of rain, and that will equals to about 33,000 gallons of water, and the requirement, the 25-year storm, equals to like 2.4 million gallons, so you can see there is a big difference.
So when they say site constraints, they're suggesting that there's just not enough room to retain the water?
Yes, that's my understanding.
Versus detain? Okay.
I think it's what, 2.5 million gallons versus 1/4 million gallons?
And even if there was the, there was the room, it would be wildly beyond their budget?
Yes, and the, yes, and it's 33,000, the federal regulations, so it's well beyond the federal and state requirements.
Okay. Thank you.
No, Mr. May, before the public comment?
I just have to hear those numbers again to understand. So we're talking about a federal requirement for 33,000 gallons of retention versus a 2.4 million gallon requirement for retention?
Page 29 of the EDR.
Yeah. Okay. Thank you. And we are talking in all circumstances about a 25-year storm, right? I heard somewhere somebody say 100-year storm, but it's a 25-year storm.
Yes, so the 2012 Commission requirement was to treat the 25-year storm. However, MDE requirement is only for the, to design for the 10-year storm.
Right. Yeah, that I heard.
I think I said 100. I meant to say 10. 25 versus 10. Okay. Let's go to public comment, if we could. We have, let me find my list. Four people signed up. You will have five minutes each, and I'll read the four names in this order: Judith Mayer, David Berg, Jim Hathaway, and Evangeline Barnes. So is Ms. Mayer here?
Yes.
Welcome.
Thank you.
There's a clock on the wall, and you'll hear a slight bird chirp at some point.
Could I have some help with the microphone, or can you all hear me? On behalf of the Community Stormwater Committee, I will offer an overview of the community's concerns related to the proposed landscape plans. From the beginning of this project, community representatives have sought to work with the site project team, the county, and NCPC to ensure that the ICCB site is integrated into the surrounding natural landscape and our neighborhoods. Our general concern is that the master site design for landscaping is mainly focused on the site's interior landscape and views of the ICCB from the perspective of Sangamo Road. In our opinion, the proposed naturalized plantings within the fence line and along Sangamo Road are very good. However, the landscaping plan does not adequately address views looking into the site from the north, south, and west. The degraded condition of the five acres of the site outside the fence adversely impact these views, but the landscaping plan does not address this area at all. So our major concern is that the current pace of tree planting and maintenance will not provide an adequate buffer to screen the garage and other buildings in a time period that is reasonable and consistent with DIA's commitments to the community. The following is a summary of the tree planting actions taken or not that have led to our concerns. The January 2012 DIA letter to community leaders committed to begin tree planting to screen the garages as soon as construction of the garage was completed. Montgomery County's Planning Board requested in 2011 and again in 2015 that DIA plant trees to screen the site's buildings from view from users of the county park located to the north of the site and elsewhere. Our offer to help plan the initial plantings of trees in 2013 was not accepted. Initial plantings in 2013 were inadequate. Newly planted trees are not watered or maintained. No additional trees were planted in 2014. Eleven trees were planted in the spring of 2015. All of them are dead. Almost 25% of the original 60 trees are dead. We met with the site operations manager in May 2015 to scope out locations where additional plantings are needed outside the fence, and he told us this week that they, quote, "May have some funds to plant some of the trees this year." As far as we know, no funding for additional planting has been obligated yet. Protection of specimen trees has been inadequate, and at least two have fallen. Although good progress has been made with the planting of the green screen on the parking garage, it will take years to provide its one layer of screening. Garage occupancy will soon expand, and privacy fencing is not an adequate substitute for the trees and the green screen promised in DIA's commitments. Garage lights are inadequately shielded to keep light inside the site despite commitments to shield them. It is important to reiterate that the commitments made to the communities by Mr. Manselman in DIA's January 2012 letter recognize and address these landscape and lighting issues. DIA committed to plant continuously outside the fence around the garage as soon as construction was completed. DIA also committed to shield lights to minimize the escape of light from the site and to use non-visible spectra for security lighting. I want to reiterate too that in 2011 and 2015, the Montgomery Planning Board requested additional natural screening outside the fence. To ensure that DIA carries out its commitments and that NCPC continues to provide oversight, we have several requests related to the landscape plans. We request that you ask that tree planting be restarted this fall on the five acres outside the fence and that action be taken to provide for watering and otherwise maintaining new trees. Please condition your approval of the plan upon fulfillment of the planting commitment. We request your support for modification to the landscape plan now to address the need to screen the site on all sides, again, northwest and south, and not just from Sangamo Road. Page 43 in Appendix A of the NCPC Executive Director's Recommendation states that in a memo on the subject of tree planting outside the fence, the site team recommended that this is not an MSD coordination item and should be considered a campus operation action moving forward. If this statement is meant to remove the issue from the MSD and the oversight of NCPC, we strongly disagree with that. We request that you ask the site team not to cut down additional trees outside the fence, and we agree that they should not install gravel outside the fence. Please request that DIA fulfill its 2012 commitment to shield lights to minimize the escape of light. Is that for me? To minimize the escape of light from the site and to use non-visible spectra for security lighting. The discussion on page 33 in your recommendation omits Mr. Manselman's explicit commitment to shield the garage lights. We would like NCPC to reinforce that commitment by rephrasing, by rephrasing this page to include Mr. Manselman's commitments.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. And we do appreciate being able to work with this group.
Thank you so much, Ms. Mayer. Next up is David Berg, to be followed by Jim Hathaway. Mr. Berg, welcome.
Mr. Chairman, may I? Thank you. It's nice to see you all again. May I suggest that the other two speakers who are focused primarily on landscaping go before me, and then I'll close up with stormwater?
That would be fine with me. So Mr. Hathaway and Ms. Barnes?
Hi, Mr. Chairman.
Yep, welcome.
My name is Jim Hathaway. My concern is along the north boundary of the ICCB property. Everything that has been talked about so far has, along the north side, has been to the south side of the garage and the inspection station. And my concern is the north side of the inspection station and the garage and along the park. The north boundary is bordered by the Sangamo Local Park, which is, has a ball field and a soccer field, and is very active, and the Waldorf School, and the National Park Service land. And this boundary needs screening from the park, and there's a homes across from the park. And we would like to have some screening to block out the view of the parking garage, the visitor center, and this inspection station. This is important because a row of trees will provide visual screening. It will also provide sound screening as well. The inspection station will have large trucks coming through, delivering supplies and goods to the site, and as a result, it will have trucks stopping, starting, having the big doors in back open so that the guards can inspect the cargo and let the dogs in to sniff for bombs or whatever. And it also will provide privacy for the neighborhood and people in the park. It's been brought up that DIA sent out this commitment letter in January of 2012, and in that letter, it says the design will include improved landscape buffering on the northern border. So the border, the landscaping that's on the south side of the inspection station does not count there because that's not along the border. The border does not have any trees or plantings along that side. Also, Montgomery County has repeatedly stated that they need some kind of screening to protect their park, and they asked the Montgomery County Parks Department to check to make sure that there are adequate trees along that border. Now, I will agree that during the summertime, that area is very well screened with the present trees. But during the wintertime, from about October 15th to April 15th, or a six-month period, when the leaves come down, it's very open, and it's almost as if nothing has been planted along that site. I would like to say the ICCB personnel have been very helpful in listening to our comments, but at this point, there's a 35% landscape plan, and it does not show any trees planted along that border. And we, they have indicated that they will talk to the contractor to encourage trees be planted along there, but at this point, that's not absolute. And so we would like the NPC to ask them to be sure to plant trees along that northern We have, the community, well, another thing on the DIA letter, commitment letter, it was five pages long. It was sent to 10 different community associations that surround the ICCB. It was, because there's a lot of concern about how that site is going to be developed. And we've raised concerns for at least four years. I think there was a comment that one of the first meetings happened like on December 23rd, and there wasn't expected to be a large crowd, and yet we filled up a large auditorium even on that late date. So the community is very much involved. And I just asked the NCPC to encourage tree and screening development along that north border. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Hathaway. Ms. Barnes?
Good morning, Commissioners. I'm Marsha Barnes. I'm a resident of the Sumner Neighborhood, which is adjacent to the ICCB, and I serve on our community's liaison committee. The decision to redevelop the site encouraged those from surrounding neighborhoods to provide input regarding this large parcel of land, which plays an outsized role in this leafy suburban area. And rather than being negative or obstructionist, we have sought to provide informed, constructive suggestions that will produce a better, more sustainable, and environmentally successful product. We've also focused on the opportunity that this project provides to remediate past damage to county and national parks caused by a previous U.S. government tenant. And I can say from personal experience that the need for environmental remediation of former military sites is an all-too-familiar problem, whether it be in former bases being turned over to the German government or here in Bethesda. And at this juncture, I can say that the design of the buildings whose exterior facades are approaching completion was improved by input from the neighboring communities. The current structures will be far more compatible with the neighboring communities. The removal of vast surface parking area is a very good thing. Yet, parking is still required, and to accommodate future employees, a multi-level garage was built, which impacts not only the close neighbors, but also the view shed from the national and county parks. And to mitigate this visual impact, we have encouraged the planting of trees, as you've heard from previous testimony, on about five acres of property, which is owned by the site but which falls outside the secure perimeter. And in spite of commitments to plant trees to provide screening, that has yet to materialize. And the integration of the site to, with the surrounding parklands, which has been highlighted in the staff report, does require this kind of planting. One of my neighbors will speak in greater detail about our concerns of how stormwater runoff will be handled in the future. But we also have concerns about the plan that I want to highlight, and that is that for years, stormwater runoff from the site flooded local streets, knocked down trees, eroded the hillside above MacArthur Boulevard, leaving two deep gullies, and it also carried a large amount of sediment downhill, which ended up in the CNO Canal. And for many of us who live in this area, the CNO Canal towpath is a wonderful, wonderful resource. And at a time when the National Park Service is financially strapped and struggles to maintain the canal, we would like to see serious work done to correct the problems created by the site's prior tenants and their wanton discharges of stormwater. DIA has promised to work with the National Park Service and the communities to do that, but to date, we have not seen significant progress. Thank you very much for your attention.
Thank you, Ms. Barnes.
I'm going to go a little fast here. Thank you for the opportunity to offer comments on behalf of the Brookmont Civic League. My focus is on stormwater management. We applaud the goal to meter exceed all stormwater requirements. However, the staff presentation was not fully accurate, and it was not balanced. They intend, the project intends to perpetuate flooding on the Brooks and Locust Lane community that will be especially damaging in the largest storms. This is our greatest stormwater concern about the plan. The plan anticipates and intends that stormwater overflowing the site will flood the neighborhood streets and potentially homes in the largest storms, the 100-year storms. So we recommend that you defer approval of the stormwater plan until DIA agrees to protect the neighborhood from flooding. Not talking about retention or detention, but flooding. Regardless of the permissive regulations, it does not make sense for this $600 million project to plan to divert stormwater in the largest storms, transferring the flooding risk to the community. How can you approve a stormwater plan at MDE the regulatory authority has found to be unacceptable and submitted? We agree with MDE's May 28 comment on Slide 4. It's just not ready, and approving an MSD that includes this bad plan, as the staff recommends, will give undue support to a flawed concept. We offer these thoughts to you, having reviewed all the stormwater We offer these thoughts to you, having reviewed all the stormwater plans. Your staff has reviewed only a favorably-written 36-page summary. Three specifics: The plan relies considerably on infiltration. Are the soils on the south campus relatively amenable to infiltration? Despite text about native soils, Phil is not amenable to infiltration, and that covers most of the south. Despite DIA's July 12 commitment to conduct the geotechnical studies needed to determine infiltration, they have not done them. MDE asked in two letters for infiltration data, very little have been developed. In fact, on Slide 5, the Corps' contractor literally directed that no infiltration studies be performed on the south campus. So they have no basis for saying how much they can retain or detain. Without the planned infiltration, they could fail to comply with ISO Section 438 requirements. They have a 1% margin, and they might not comply with MDEs. Second, they plan to divert about 2.5 acres of stormwater from two other channels, channels to the southeast. The submission completely omits a mention of the diversion from the mid-site stream. If half of the 2,000, 2.5 acres were not diverted to the southeast just during heavy storm events, then the flooding could be nearly eliminated. The submission terms these diversions as merely rerouting. Use of the technically term, technically correct term diversion could trigger MDE's more stringent new project standards. Third, on Slide 6, the submission mentions storm drain surcharging, but it doesn't say where the surcharge will go. It runs to the neighborhood storm drain. In the largest storms, the site's surcharge will overwhelm with nearly twice the pipe's capacity. Largely because of these diversions, instead of appreciable reductions claimed, the plan will reduce flooding only slightly, about 16%. The slide quotes the actual language in the plan. We do not believe the Corps has made the county aware of the flooding potential and its cause. On Slide 7, in a February 15, February 5 email, DIA's project manager committed pending MDA approval to implement two critical feasible improvements to the plan that will eliminate the community's concerns. These are feasible, they're simple, they're on hand, and they won't cost that much, and they designed them themselves. Though the project team developed these specific improvements, the Corps has not submitted them to MDE for approval, and Mr. Manselman has committed only to consider them later in the planning process. These solutions are still not included in the plan. For these reasons and because there are numerous errors and misrepresentations in the plan, we request that you not approve this submission until they agree to implement plans to protect the neighborhood from flooding. Differral would send a needed signal to the Corps that they need to address this issue. Turning to restoration, on Slide 9, the EA process for restoration of damage caused by historic stormwater releases from the site to NPS and county parklands is seriously behind schedule. Its scope is too narrow because much of the damaged area is excluded from the study, and the wrong engineers are developing restoration plans. Community coordination is nil. To the extent this, this study unduly constrains the outcomes, the restoration work will be insufficient. The delays in important emissions increase the risk that all the past damage will not be repaired and future damage prevented. On DIA's commitment letters, we ask that you request that DIA fulfill them. They made these commitments in 2012. There's no mention in, of the two letters, in the submission to NCP, in the 35% plan itself, and even in the recommendations document, not one. DIA should fulfill the commitments, and it should be, live up to its promise to use the letters as two of the critical guiding documents for site planning. Mr. Manselman told the communities that the commitment letters would be included in every contract and subcontract, communicated systemically, yet they were omitted from the submission to NCPC. On cooperation problems, I encourage you to read Rachel Toker's clear and, and personal testimony, which explains clearly the nature of our difficult relationship with the project team. The submission to NCP exaggerates and distorts DIA's engagement with the committee. After initial successes, the reality is a lack of substantive and timely cooperation in implementing the commitments. The record on, on implementation is a worrisome incomplete.
Please.
We have significant concerns here. I, just one last. So thank you for considering our comments. We ask that you include the six points listed on Slide 10 among your comments to DIA. We appreciate your efforts to assure that the ICCB site redevelopment benefits not only the intelligence community, but also the surrounding communities in Montgomery County. And we've provided Ms. Kemp with a list of bullets that would accomplish that.
Thank you, Mr. Berg, very much.
Thank you. I'd be very happy to answer questions if you have any.
Thank you. That ends the public comment period. We'll return the matter to commission members for comments or questions, and we also have representatives from the design team here as well. Comments or questions among commission members? I will note that, as the EDR says, the applicant has met all the requirements for the preliminary stage.
Mr. Chairman, so I am interested in hearing what the response is from the applicant on the concerns that were raised by those folks who testified, because there's some, you know.
Anything?
Well, I mean, there are a number of what seem to be simple communications issues that ought to be addressed about what's, what, what has been promised and, you know, what will be delivered when, and so on. So I, I think that that's, you know, it would be helpful to have a point-by-point. I understand that, you know, we're not voting on a project with an approved stormwater plan at this moment, but we want to know that when we get to that point at final, that it actually will have gotten the approval and that it will have the support of the community.
Is there a representative from the applicant who'd like to speak? Please identify yourself.
Yes, my name is Suzanne Garrison. I'm the chief project management officer for this project. With me, I have Tom Fitzgerald. He's the lead engineer who's been working on this for the, for the past five years, leading the engagement with the community or assisting us with that engagement, but also managing the master set design. I will first want to say good morning. Thank you so much for letting us have this opportunity to have this discussion with you all. Before we attack, or tackle, I should say. I was making sure you were awake. I, I want to just reiterate that we continue to fill up, fulfill our obligations that we have outlined in the commitment letters that have been referenced earlier, and we continue to do so, and we will continue to do so. We have meetings with the community. We have another one scheduled in August. It's a leadership community meeting in which we're actually going to branch back out and reach out to everyone again to say, hey, please come on. And we've, excuse me, we've put together an Excel spreadsheet to make the commitment letters a little easier to understand and to lay it out more systematically on, this is what has been in the commitment letters, this is what we've done so far, this is what we plan to do. If for whatever reason we aren't able to do something per the commitment letter, this is why. We haven't run into any of those situations yet. We continue to fulfill a lot of those obligations. Trying to remember all of the, the comments that were made, I know trees were one of the issues. The trees, the comment on the trees that have died, we are replanting all of them. They're under warranty. It has been requested that they be replanted in October during the planting season, so that will absolutely take place. There have been additional plantings, and I'm going to refer to Tom. He'll be able to speak on that a little better than myself.
Yeah. Thanks, Suzanne. Again, it's a pleasure to be here to address the board, and I would compliment your staff for preparing a very thorough and intensive review of our preliminary submittal. I think Vivian's done a great job of presenting that, so I would like to commend her and David for their engagement. We do have some difficult issues to work through with the community, with the legacy of the site and the downstream channels that have eroded over time. The site, as Vivian indicated, was developed 70 years ago before modern stormwater management was really thought about. You can see the large areas of pavement that were on the site that was basically uncontrolled runoff at the time, and we've done an excellent job, and I think I'm very privileged to work with a client that is that engaged, trying to exceed the regulatory requirements for stormwater management, and we have done that effectively. I know Mr. Berg and I have different opinions about how that should be done, and I want to lay any concerns about the flooding in Brooks Lane. What we've done with the project has reduced the flood potential in Brooks Lane over the current conditions, even with the reconfiguration of the drainage boundaries within the site and the closure of that problematic southwest outfall. So the probability of flood post-development, when we get this project completed in the 2017 timeframe, will be less for the neighborhood than what is currently occurring there, even with the increased drainage area going to it. And really, that's a tribute to the landscape architect and the stormwater management design, and how we integrated that to maximize infiltration on-site and reduce those peak runoff volumes, even for the 100-year storm. So you did mince the terms a little bit there, Mr. Chairman, on the design storm is a 25-year storm, and when you look at that, that's 5.7 inches of rainfall. So when you think about the last time you saw an extreme storm event, we had some pretty big storms come through here yesterday, one to two inches with some flooding in the region. We're managing 5.7 inches of rainfall, is what we're doing on-site. So I think we're going way beyond any limit of reason from an engineering and technical standpoint to address the stormwater concerns. You can never appease all the fear of the community based on past dialogue and ownership, and we're doing a great job, I think, of engaging them and continuing to do that through the process. And we welcome any additional specific questions you have. It's hard to refute anything David has presented to you here, because I haven't seen what he's presented in paper form, but if you have a specific question, I'll try and answer it to the best of my ability.
Could you comment on the item of the, Mr. Hathaway's questions about plantings on the north side of the garage and the, is that possible, or is that in the landscaping plan?
Right now, our scope of work was inside the fence line, and the fence line on the north side of the campus, we have security issues where we have to keep a clear zone around that fence. The property line does go outside that fence line to a limited area, and I think we are working with Montgomery County National Capital Parks and Planning Commission on how to screen that site effectively. Part of the problem, as Jim mentioned, or Mr. Hathaway mentioned, is there is good mature deciduous tree cover in that area. It's well-screened in the summertime. It's very difficult to get evergreen trees to grow in that environment when you have a mature tree canopy, and I'm not a landscape architect, so I'm stepping on thin lines here, but that's my understanding of, of the problem with getting the trees to propagate, particularly during a dry season planting. You know, you've got to take advantage of the natural cycle of, of tree growth and put them in the ground in October. So really, even though it's a three-year process, there's only been three windows in those three years to get the plants established and planted. So I think the site is continuing to work with that. We understand the concern, we share the concern. They've put in some temporary measures to try and help with that, with vinyl slats inserted in the fence to restrict some of the light trespass outside of the site from the parking garage. There's a lot of interactive things going on with the community continually to address those concerns, and I think it's a valid one, and we'll, we'll keep continuing to address it.
The EDR does say for you to consider additional landscape and, to screen the garage and the light, and the vehicle inspection station, so you will continue engaging with the community on that, and Mr. Hathaway, right?
Yep. And there'll be some early plantings in October this year. The site will, will start with some partial occupancy, as I understand it, in the central building, which is just finishing up construction. And as part of that, we'll be doing some early landscaping in that area, so it will help with that problem.
And currently, we do have some options that we've put up on the parking garage, various screens, fabric screens, vinyl screens. We've also done some slating through the green screening to see if that would help. We're running into issues with if we do something too dense, it gets the wind and that won't work. So we're, we're working with folks to try to, to help mitigate that, so we absolutely, it's on our radar. And we're, I mean, if you go over there now, you'll see stuff kind of tacked up because we're trying to see how it works. And we were, actually, I was there this morning with the, some of my program managers at 5:00 in the morning just to see the light, and we were driving around to see how it's affecting folks. So we're aware of it, we're, we're trying to come up with some options, so that's, that's the answer for that, is that we continue to work it, or actively continue to work that.
Thank you very much. Any other questions, Mr. May?
Yeah, no, Mr. Berg made a specific recommendation, or rather suggested that there was some, a recommendation to make some relatively simple changes that would give the neighbors greater assurance that there wouldn't be a problem when, in the rare circumstance, I guess, that you get beyond the 5.7 inches of rain. And, I mean, is that, is that your understanding, that there are some changes that could be made that, that you're considering, or you haven't considered, or is that a, is there something factually off there?
I think, as I understand it, what Mr. Berg is referring to is an email that Suzanne's predecessor, Mr. Bourgeois, had corresponded with Mr. Berg back in 2014 timeframe, late November, December timeframe, I think it was. February?
February.
February, Mr. Berg reminds me. And that was based on a site walk that he and David had had together, and the, part of the collaboration with the community. And Mr. Bourgeois had committed to looking into the possibility of microtopography on-site to increase the on-site infiltration capability and extraction, and that's all part of our landscaping design as it is.
So it's been incorporated?
Yes.
Please, Mr. Berg, I, I understand you have more to say, but you've had your opportunity to speak, so. The, so, I mean, these are changes that you say have already been integrated?
We are evaluating these changes. There was a litany of things that Mr. Bourgeois talked with David Berg about in the email, and I'm not prepared to go down that inventory that I don't have in front of me.
Right.
But we are continuing to evaluate options to reduce the impact of the site. This is a model for sustainability in the region, and we are pursuing in that way, you know, in accordance with LEED criteria and the community input. There's a limit of, of technical feasibility and cost as we approach these things. We're way above the, the treatment requirements for any regulatory standard, and we're trying to integrate as much as we can to address the concerns of the community, and we'll continue to do so.
Okay. So I expect that, since stormwater is something that will be required for the final submission, that much of these issues will be resolved by that time, and you'll be able to speak directly to, you know, the extent to which you were able to address the concerns of the, of the neighbors with regard to stormwater management?
Yes, sir.
The, I appreciate the work that you've done already with the National Park Service on, on the moving to correct or mitigate the, or remediate, rather is the right word, the damage that had already been occurring. And I understand that there's been very recent developments along those lines. You're, you've got a contractor on board now to, to, to do the work, is that, or to do the, the study, or the EA, rather?
Yes. The process has been very strung out because of the, the inter-agency cooperation that had to be worked out with MOI, and then the fact that DIA is spending money to address a problem on National Park Service lands contractually.
Can you speak up a little bit?
Excuse me, yes. The, the process has been drug out because of the inter-agency coordination issues with National Park Service, and it's been delayed because of that. DIA has to spend money on National Park Service land, and there's limitations in federal funding cycles on agencies spending money outside the scope of, of their operation. And we were recently awarded a task order to develop a 15% design for the concept restoration plan for those areas, as, actually, this week. And we will be embarking upon that in the next several months, and that should be tracking with our next submittal to NCPC, and we'll be able to give you an update on that. The, Mr. Berg indicated that we weren't the right firm to do that, but we are the right firm because we've been studying this hydrology for five years now. We have a better understanding of how all this works together on the complex campus environment, as well as the surrounding community and how that's addressed. The ultimate remediation plan will be for the National Park Service to define, since it's on their property.
Right.
And that'll go through the whole NEPA process for them with public engagement. And as part of our scope on the 15% design, we, we will be soliciting the community's input on that 15% design to make sure we're addressing the concerns that the community may have about restoration efforts in those channels. So the nuance of how, the schedule, how that goes down, you know, it's, it's going to be a long, protracted process. It's not going to be easy to go in there and do this work, and it's a sensitive area, and we have to respect the National Park Service's interest in that area to do that, so.
Well, speaking for the National Park Service, we appreciate the, the deference that you're giving to our concerns and, and, and working with us. I think we all want to try to move things along as fast as we can, although we know, we understand there are complications in that on, on, on both sides. We have our own bureaucratic processes and our own work overload, so that's some, part of what we struggle with as we try to work through these things. But helpful that we'll continue to work through that and that we'll get a good progress report next time around on that.
That conclude, Mr. Berg? At this time?
I think that's it for me for right now, yeah.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Dixon.
I've been with this project, I guess, through its entire life cycle. In fact, my uncle used to work at the, with the former tenant of that, of that facility, who created some of the initial problems. He didn't, but the agency.
Blame it on your uncle.
Sure, he was fighting, you know, for a better situation. But, but I guess I'm just a little concerned, we went through this once before where we got feedback that the community didn't feel they were being engaged, and we had some very kumbaya meetings out there, and the community seemed to be engaged. I just, I guess I kind of hope and feel that next time you come before us... I guess I kind of hope and feel that next time you come before us, at least we'll know what you can agree on and why, and that the community has been fully engaged in the discussion. You know, I've been involved in community action for a long time, so I know it's sometimes hard to ever get the feeling that we get the community engaged enough, or we as a community get engaged enough. But I kind of feel a little uncomfortable when I hear folks saying that they aren't having access and it's not happening. So I just hope that doesn't happen. I'm not going to try to drill down on the specifics. That's what you all the talented do, but I just don't like community groups to come in and say they seem like they're having difficulty getting access. And I won't be happy as a commissioner if I hear that next time without some easy list of what we can do and we can't do that the community understands. So I guess that's kind of where I am. In fact, I was the one that made a motion to table this a number of years ago so you all could get engaged with the community. And now we're kind of back at the point where I'm hearing the same kind of signals.
I appreciate that.
Thank you for all you're doing in the community, too. I just make that clear.
Thank you. Ms. Wright?
Yes, what he said. I was going to start out on a more positive note, though, because I have seen the site, and I would say that the design of the campus is... has been much improved by the process. But it is very disappointing to hear the community come forward with their testimony today because they have been organized and exemplar in the... of the planning process. And I would say, you know, when a marriage is not really successful if both parties aren't saying it is. And so you're all sunshine and roses, and they're not feeling it. So you have work to do. If only in... if you've had 20 meetings, that's great in terms of quantity, but it doesn't sound like the quality is really where it needs to be. And I don't envy either one of you because I gather you've inherited this from Mr... what's his name?
Manselman.
Manselman, who was here for a couple of the meetings, and you've got big shoes to fill. But I would also say that you shouldn't promise things if you can't afford them. And you have a pretty good idea. We all do because of the slow and lumbering progress that we make in government budget cycles. We have a pretty good idea of what we have to spend. So if you're not going to fulfill your promises to the community, I hope we don't hear that next time. And I... the stormwater, my understanding is that we are voting absent resolution, knowing that the stormwater issues, channeling my former colleague, Mr. Hart, who would have been all over this. So I'm assuming that we're going to talk further about that next time, but I would really hope that you would solve this problem with the community. They've ebbed and flowed, and they've been in here, gosh, I don't know, a couple of years ago, very unhappy, then they were very happy and pleased with the progress, and to hear them uniformly say that it's... that what you're telling us is not the case is very disappointing. So I would just leave it at that.
I appreciate that comment.
And second, Mr. Dixon's remarks, and I hope that we don't hear this again.
Thank you, Mike. I'll be back.
Anything additional?
Mr. Chairman, first, I also agree that this site plan is much improved from the existing condition, and looking at the history, I thought that was very helpful to me. But there were several concerns that were brought up today in my mind, and I just want to address one. Mr. Berg, in his statement and submission, indicated some concern about flooding in the neighborhoods, and he was saying, frankly, his point is, if we're going to do a $600 million project, can't we address this? So outside of the details of stormwater management, retention, and treatment, there's flooding that's a level of stormwater management on this site. You indicated just a few minutes ago that the flood potential would be less. What would it take, actually, to eliminate flood potential at certain milestone storms? You know, even the 10-year or the 25-year?
I think I'll take that. The flood potential, when you think about FEMA and what they plan for, and when you buy a home and you look at a floodplain map, they define floodplain boundaries. I think Vivian uncovered this during her staff investigation of our representation of the setting. The 100-year flood boundary is nowhere near any of the residences on Brooks Lane. It's not... there's no mapped flood boundary anywhere near the site that we're affecting. The proposed stormwater design takes the 100-year storm down below the discharge peak from the 100-year storm currently. So that's where I come across as saying we're reducing the flood risk of the site to Brooks Lane in that outfall area that's been raised by Mr. Berg. The flood potential and the cost to attenuate floods above that gets larger and larger when you start going... I mean, six inches or 5.7 inches of rain in a 24-hour period is a big storm, and we're managing that on-site under the 25-year criteria. So when you look at the 100-year storm up at 10 inches of rain, we're still able to reduce the peak flow from that 10-inch rainstorm down below the current level. So to misrepresent the design intent and function the way it's been presented here today by the community, I think, is inappropriate. But maybe it's just an educational process we need to go through to inform them and get better dialogue on what that flood risk and potential is, because we don't have any evidence of flood impact currently. So there's no flooding reports from Montgomery County DOT in the streets that indicate there's a problem with the downstream channels. There's no report of flood in people's homes caused by the site that we have found. So it's an unsubstantiated fact that was presented here today, and we'll work with the community to try and identify those risks. But, you know, we're reducing the risk from current day.
Okay. Well, I appreciate that address. That's all. Thank you.
Anything else from anyone?
I forgot one thing that I wanted to say, too, because we did have this conversation, many conversations about the design of the garage, and it's really too late for this site. I fought the good fight, I think, and lost, but it's never a good idea to depend on vegetation to screen a building because, for obvious reasons, we've all learned that the hard way. The much better idea is to design a better building. And again, it's too late for this site, but I would urge you to follow up on the screening. Vinyl strips through a chain-link fence is... or is it chain-link?
The back portion, yes.
Yeah. That's not exactly a handsome solution either. So I would urge you to vigorously undertake replanting of the dead trees and add the ones you promised because it's the least you can do, because that's a... unlike the other buildings on the site, which are quite handsome, that is just... there's no amount of lipstick on that pig that's really going to help, but you could at least block the light from emerging headlights, et cetera, and it may help with the sound, as they suggested.
Mr. May? Yeah, I just want to say that I really appreciate the comments, and my fellow commissioners with regard to the concerns that were raised by the community, and I agree fully with Commissioner Wright's comments and the vice chair's comments, and I think we do want to see a happier marriage, I guess, expressed when the project returns for a final approval. I am a little concerned about your comment that Mr. Berg may have misrepresented the flood risk or to call that a misrepresentation or to say that it's inappropriate. I mean, that's what I was trying to ask, is there... was there something factually inaccurate about that? And if there is something factually inaccurate, then I think what we owe to the community at this point is to explain how what they see as a concern is not really a concern for factual reasons. If when we... when the facts are all out there and NCPC staff has an opportunity to investigate to the level that they need to for our purposes, then we can debate whether, you know, someone's opinion in the end is different from another's. I also do want to emphasize again what Commissioner Wright had said about the role of the community in this project, because they really did turn this around, and they have been, I think, as you say, exemplar. And we often have projects in this forum and other forums in which I'm involved where community concerns are not necessarily based on a true understanding of either the situation or the process that is involved in getting the projects built. And in this case, I think actually this is a very smart group of people who are working diligently and reasonably to achieve, I think, a better project, and I appreciate everything that they're doing on behalf of you to make a better project and on behalf of the Park Service to protect our interests. And I'm hopeful that when we get to final, that it'll be a happy marriage again. That's Commissioner Wright's side. Thank you.
Chair, something?
Mr. Chairman, assuming the fellow commissioners have been able to address their questions, and given that it does meet the requirements for the preliminary site development plan, I would make a motion that we approve the preliminary site development plan consistent with all the other narrative in the executive director's recommendation.
It's been moved. Is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded.
If I might just add one other comment, Mr. Chairman. I'm sure certainly it's unintended, but I think if someone heard just a snippet of some of the commentary and some of the presentations, they could possibly infer that they... that maybe the staff's presentation was biased or not independent. I'd just like to reinforce, at least from my perspective as being an applicant on some of these and others, that the staff is tremendously thorough, that the staff is tremendously independent, and I think the staff does a tremendous job of providing a very clear and open and balanced presentation in all conditions. I just would like to reinforce that point. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Point well made. Anything else? Hearing none. It's been properly moved and seconded, all in favor of the EDR. Say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, no.
One abstention.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you very much. Members of all of you.
On our agenda, we noted this is the time that we would take a recess. Is that what folks would like? And is 30 minutes sufficient? 30 minutes appears to be sufficient, so we will... let's just say that we'll reconvene at 1:00. Let's... 1:00 PM. We're in recess.
The good part about it is it will now begin, you know, lasting forever because it's written down on the transcript.
Well, transfers fall this day.
Everybody else called it right.
I know.
Do not attempt ever to do it yourself.
He saw her.
He saw.
I did.
I told him to.
Remind him.
She has no rights. But she was.
I'm not sure.
What'd you say? Answer.
We could bring the meeting back to order.
preliminary and final site and building plans for the Kennedy Center expansion. We have Mr. Hart, welcome.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman and members of the Commission. The Kennedy Center has submitted preliminary and final site and building plans for a seventy, seventy-two thousand square foot expansion to their existing building. As you may recall, this project was submitted for preliminary review back in December of two thousand and fourteen, and at that time, the Commission approved the two land-based pavilions as well as the landscape, but did not approve the floating river pavilion. In May of this year, the Kennedy Center returned to the Commission and gave an information presentation describing how it relocated the, the floating river pavilion to the land, and this is what I will be presenting today. As a refresher, the project is located here in northwest, and this is a little bit of the context. This is the triangular shape of the, of the site we're talking about, bordered by E Street Expressway, the Rock Creek and Potomac Parkway, and to the south is the Theodore Roosevelt As you may recall, the purpose of the project is to provide rehearsal, classroom, and event space at a new facility because these were either not originally included in the design or currently not sufficient. The Kennedy Center has a goal of providing greater access to, to performances for the public and greater access, public access to the memorial as well. Connecting the site to the trail network is also an important aspect of this project. The site itself is approximately four point six acres, and as I noted, it's south of the, of the main building. A portion of the site is located in both the hundred and five hundred year floodplains, and I'll discuss this in the staff analysis section. This is the, a view from the roof of the Kennedy Center looking southward. You'll see the access road to the underground parking garage, as well as the loop road for the, for bus turnaround and bus parking. And in the distance, you see the Potomac River, which is to the west of the site. A couple of other images. On the right is a reciprocal image of the one that you just previously saw, showing the bus parking and turnaround and the southern facade of the, of the Kennedy Center. The image on the left is taken from the terrace that will be replaced and, and will removed and replaced with the new expansion. Okay, over the past few eighteen months, the Commission has seen the project several times, and the Kennedy Center has provided a few information presentations, and we've also reviewed it at concept design and preliminary design as well. Most recently in May, as I noted earlier, was an information presentation update on the design. Today, the Commission is reviewing the preliminary and final design for the expansion project, which are the, the building aspect of it, and the preliminary and final design for a trail connection is expected to be submitted to the Commission in the fall/winter timeframe. So, the proposal itself includes seventy-two thousand square feet of building, a hundred and thirty thousand square feet of landscaping, and it's contained in, there are, I guess, three pavilions. Most of this is, is underground development. Development includes rehearsal space, studios, classrooms, and event space, and there's another component which talks about improving public access to public arts, and this is done through a, a few means. They're shown here. There's a simulcasting performances that are going on in the, in the Kennedy Center will be done on the north face of the, of this pavilion, with the Glisando Pavilion. There are also windows that are being introduced into the, these new rehearsal space that will allow visitors to see the, the performers practicing the performances. And then finally, connection to trails like the connection to the Rock Creek and Potomac Parkway Trail, as well as the trail that goes over the Theodore Roosevelt Bridge. So, this is what you reviewed in December at preliminary design. It includes these three pavilions, two land-based and one river pavilion, as well as the landscape that included two reflecting pools. A pedestrian bridge that connects the expansion from the land into the river pavilion, and then a connection onto, back onto the, the land at the Rock Creek and Potomac Parkway Trail. At the December meeting, you recall that you approved the preliminary design for the land-based portion of the project, but did not approve the, the river pavilion component, excuse me, and you requested further information about the impacts of the river pavilion on the rowing community. The Kennedy Center reviewed the Commission's comments, as well as studied the, the public access and connectivity alternatives and operational and maintenance requirements for the floating pavilion, and have now decided to move the river pavilion from the Potomac River and place it on land. And this is the final design that's before you today. There are a few things I'd like to point out about this design. The new land-based pavilion scheme is, this new pavilion itself is still called the River Pavilion, even though it's on land. It affords views towards the river and the, and the Theodore Roosevelt Island. Staff acknowledges that, that moving this pavilion will now provide a destination to this portion of the site. The added benefit is this move will allow the Kennedy Center better access for operational and maintenance purposes. Moving this building will impact the landscape, however. The reflecting pool that you see here actually will shrink. It will get smaller because of this, this move. As the floating pavilion previously provided pedestrian access to the expansion from the trail, a connection will need to be included in the, in the future. This connection should, shown here in this image, is a, an image of one of the alternatives that, of what this might look like. The Kennedy Center will work with staff and the National Park Service and others on developing this, this connection in the, in the future. So, looking at the levels, this is the first level of the, of the design, and there's the main entrance to the facility. This is primarily an underground facility. This is actually at grade, and I'll show a, a section in an upcoming slide so you can understand that a little better. And on this level is a foyer, a boardroom, a classroom, a, a, an event space, as well as a multipurpose area as well, theater as well. There's views, these kind of white areas are actually two-level areas that you can look down from, from up on this level down into some of the performance, the rehearsal spaces which are shown here. I'm sorry, one other thing. The river pavilion is, is shown here as well, and that has, and, and of course, an indoor space and a, a small outdoor seating area as well. So, on the lower level, we have rehearsal rooms, classrooms, studios, lounges, instructional areas, practice areas as well, changing rooms, storage areas, and offices. Access to this facility from the Rock Creek and Potomac Parkway is here for vehicles so that they may enter into the parking garage here. The, there's also an entrance on the eastern side here, entering into the parking garage. There is a bus parking and turnaround area that's included in this level as well. The area that you see that's shaded is actually the kind of finished portion of the site. The rest of this area is the access to the garage or, or loading areas. The elevation and section are shown here to give you a little bit more clarity around where these elements are. This also helps to show the relationship between the various buildings. The river pavilion, which is a little lower in elevation than the Glisando and entry pavilion, which themselves are lower than the, than the Kennedy Center existing building that's, that's shown here. The section helps to, to give you a little bit more information in terms of the, the bottom level where the rehearsal space is and, and the classrooms and such, and the entry into the parking garage area, which is this area here, and the, the bus parking as well. The river pavilion you see here is kind of at the same level as this is actually all kind of underground piece. Pedestrian movement around the site is shown in this image. As I noted earlier, the connection to the Rock Creek and Potomac Parkway Trail is a, a future design and a future element. This is just showing the movement around the site and the connection to the Theodore Roosevelt Bridge Trail. The Kennedy Center proposes a variety of rooms, as they're calling them, as part of the design. There is a, and I'll just step around the, walk around the, the site plan itself. There's the entry area with a, a entry court that has a, a small reflecting pool and a, a deck area, and it's off of the, there's a classroom and a boardroom at, at this location. Pathways lead you to the, the Ginkgo Grove, which is on the southernmost portion of the site, which is adjacent to the, the new river pavilion, outdoor seating area for the cafe, and then a larger reflecting pool. There is also a connection here that will afford a, an outdoor classroom for giving information about either the memorial or the spaces, the performances that are going on. There is an event terrace that will connect the Glisando Pavilion, which is the event pavilion, with the, the new river pavilion. And then here is the simulcast lawn. I hadn't mentioned earlier, I briefly mentioned it earlier, the Kennedy Center is looking to have a projections of ongoing performances projected onto the north face of the Glisando Pavilion, which is, excuse me, which is this face here. There will be a, a small hole cut into the facade, the southern facade of the Kennedy Center to allow for a projector to be set up and project the images on the north face of this, of this building. And then people would be able to, the public in general would be able to sit. No tickets necessary, just sit and, and watch the performance. The landscape plan is shown here. Because of the below-grade facility, you see the outline for the facility here. The trees that are included in the landscape are really on the periphery of the design. On the interior of this design is generally speaking, made up, the landscape elements are made up of perennial grasses as well as sedum. The Kennedy Center notes that the, that this green roof, along with the reflecting pools, will provide stormwater management for the entire site to meet both the Energy Independence and Security Act, as well as the District Department of the Environment stormwater regulations. And this proposal will include a hundred and thirty thousand square feet of landscaping gardens as part of the, the project. Just looking at kind of tree species, softwood magnolia, sumac, willow oak, several varieties of maple, as well as ginkgo. The perennial grasses include weeping love, pink mulley, fountain grass, and switchgrass. As I noted earlier, or, or as I'll note, the grasses themselves can reach height of several feet, and this will help to provide some variety in the landscape. Moving to the sedum, it will be used as a ground cover on sloped areas to provide some visual, visual interest in the landscape. You can see a number of varieties here. They include, I'm not going to read all of them, Haley's Comet, Winter Mahogany, Green Mantle, Wild Cherry, Neon, Autumn Sunrise, and John Creech, to name a few. These are generally low-profile landscape elements that don't typically grow more than twelve inches in height. The newest element, as I noted earlier, is the river pavilion, which is shown here in a little bit more detail. The element here is, as I said, is moved onto the land. The underground piece is shown here in the section. There is a, an area for drop-offs so that people may be able to enter the facility via car as their cars are coming to the site. The plan includes a, as I said, a outdoor seating area. The river pavilion itself is kind of set up to be used as either a cafe or a small performance venue space. And you'll see here the view from the Ginkgo Grove looking to the northwest. There are views that are, that you can see actually through the river pavilion to the, the Potomac River, as well as the Theodore Roosevelt Island as well. And this is just a perspective rendering showing the image or the, the design from the, from the west looking eastward, and just what the, the elements would look like in their context, and where the, the scale of the, of these facilities next to the, the scale of the Kennedy Center building to the left. Staff reviewed the project and focused conformance, focused on a few things, including the conformance to NCPC plans as, such as the ones shown here, the COM Plan and the Monumental Core Framework Plan. Staff found the project to be compliant with these plans, which contains policies for connecting to trail networks, including the Rock Creek and Potomac Parkway and the trail, and they also describe improving connections to, for the public to memorials, which this project also accomplishes. Staff also addressed a few issues relating to the project with regard to the relocation of the river pavilion, floodplain impacts, and future pedestrian connection. We are appreciative of the effort that Kennedy Center has undergone in the past six months to shift this major element from the river to the land. We know this was not an easy decision. This design change allows this element to be constructed on the land south of the main building, and the Kennedy Center acknowledges that this move will provide a better experience for visitors to the memorial and the, and the, and the Kennedy Center itself, as well as making it easier to access this, this facility for operational and maintenance needs. In addition, because of this move, there will, will not be any impacts to the Potomac River, as would have been the case with the previous design. This new river pavilion will also provide a destination on the southernmost portion of the site that really needed some activation to encourage visitors to explore the site in its entirety. At its December meeting, the Commission raised some concerns about the preliminary design impacts on the floodplain. Staff has reviewed the environmental assessment and note that the floodplain impacts were evaluated in the environmental assessment for all of the project alternatives, including the three land-based pavilion alternative. The environmental assessment noted that there would be a minor flood, flooding impact as the project is located on the hundred and five hundred year floodplain. The Kennedy Center has designed the unfinished portions of the project, which are the, the garage entry and bus parking area, to flood, as the garage entry elevation is lower than the hundred-year floodplain elevation, which is fifteen feet. The storage, the garage itself will, will be able to flood as well as part of the, as part of the project. The storage is being provided as mitigation for developing on the floodplain. The Kennedy Center notes that the floodwaters will be filtered and slowly released following a, any flooding event, and staff is satisfied that this issue has been addressed. Regarding the future pedestrian connection to the Rock Creek and Potomac Parkway Trail, as the Kennedy Center has changed the design and removed the floating river pavilion, the design for this connection will need to be further explored with various partners, including the National Park Service, before it can be submitted for review. Staff recently met with the National Park Service, as well as the Kennedy Center and others, and we've agreed that we need to conduct additional environmental study for this alternative because this particular design configuration was not included in the environmental assessment. In addition, the signatories will need to amend the memorandum of agreement for Section 106 purposes, as the project will likely impact the Parkway, the 106 purposes, as the project will likely impact the Parkway, the Rock Creek and Potomac Parkway, which is on the National Historic Register. It is expected that these processes will take place over the next few months. And Mr. Chairman, with that, it is the Executive Director's recommendation that the Commission approve the preliminary and final site and building plans for the expansion of the Kennedy Center for the Performing Arts, notes that the Kennedy Center is not proposing the pedestrian connection to the waterfront at this time, and will submit it for approval in the future, following further environment, environmental analysis and a determination by the National Park Service regarding the use of Rock Creek and Potomac Parkway as appropriate. And finally, commends the Kennedy Center for proposing an integrated design that meets its goals for programming, public access, and education on land, and for its future plans to reinforce connections to the waterfront. And that concludes my presentation. And we have representatives here from the Kennedy Center.
I'll note that we're pleased to have with us Deborah Rutter, who is President of the Kennedy Center, and welcome your remarks at this time.
Thank you. Carlton, thank you so much for the impressive and very knowledgeable presentation, and I think that's indicative of the kind of relationship that we've been able to develop over these months. And Chairman Bryant, and to all of the Commissioners, I want to say thank you so much for your constructive involvement and your support, involvement, and feedback that has really led us to this place. We are at the Kennedy Center in the midst of strategic planning for our future, and this project is very much a piece of that. As we think about new audiences, we think about new programming options, we understand and look forward to the 100th anniversary of JFK's birth, and understanding the important role that we play as a destination and a memorial. This is very much a piece of all of those plans. We are proud of what we have here, and we're thrilled with the relationship that we've had over these months to develop the project to this point. We look forward to continuing that kind of conversation with our next set of hoops to jump through, and I know that we will have that, and look forward to coming back to you in the fall with the connection to the waterfront. So thank you very much. I really want to offer another great deal of thanks to David, to Lucy, to Carlton for their hands-on support and feedback, and clearly from this presentation you can tell that they really know what we're trying to do and have helped us greatly, and so I thank you all very, very much. I don't know if you have any more questions. I have Chris McBoy, who you know very well. If you have questions for us, we're delighted, but please accept our thanks.
Thank you very much. Well, let's see.
Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner members, Mr. Dixon?
Mr. Chairman, I'm, first of all, I want to compliment the Kennedy Center on their tacking from the river, which I know was a major tack, particularly when you do tacking on land and not in the water. But also I want to take the opportunity to encourage a second, and encourage discussion, and encourage a final vote, but I'd like to at least move this, and hopefully we'll get a second in discussion after I make the motion to have it adopted. So I'm making a motion now, asking for seconds, asking for discussion, asking for questions as part of the record. Thank you.
It's been moved and seconded, and it's open for further discussion. Mr. Shaw?
So I had a question on the original riverfront pavilion. There was discussion about that being open just for a café to general public when the center wasn't open. Is there still the intention on the pavilion to be an open facility throughout the day?
Thank you for that, because it actually relates to all of them. We actually are looking at programming activities that would take place in all three of the spaces, and that by and large, these will be open during our regular daytime hours, which we have at present. We're looking at specific kind of activities that would take place at days of week and times, but in general, we're looking at it being open for café and other purposes throughout any given day.
That's great to know. And then just finally, just I'm excited about the connection to the river, and that, you know, that's a big idea for the, for the mayor and for the district about increasing the activity and trails along the river, so I'm looking forward to seeing that design come through.
We are too.
An upcoming meeting.
Thank you.
Can I just jump on that? I'm ready to approve the connection today.
Talk to the guy next to you.
Exactly. I'll, we go forward. So I just wanted to reiterate, I, I'm very excited about it. I think you guys have done a tremendous job balancing so much, your own interests, your own requirements, and then that of, of the rest of the surrounding area, but I think you ought to be applauded for that. I think the recommendation from the staff is perfect in what I'm looking at. I mean, I think the recommendation to approve, the note of the importance of the pedestrian connection, I mean, I think that is actually going to help your own business development on the site for bringing people on and through your, even just average hours, and maybe they extend hours as you find that the demand increases. So I'm, I'm very encouraged of what I've seen and, and very supportive. Thank you.
Mr. May?
Yes, I think I commented more extensively at the last review of this, but I'm very pleased with where this project has come to at this point, and I'm very grateful for the cooperative relationship that we have with the Kennedy Center and working on this project from start to finish, and on prior projects that didn't quite make it all the way through, and this and other projects that we're working on, including some other pedestrian-related improvements along the Parkway that will, will help the park and help the Kennedy Center. So we look forward to working on all of those together, and look forward to coming back to the Commission with proposals, or proposals for consideration when it comes to this crossing. So thank you very much.
We look forward to working with you.
Additional praise to be heaped?
Yes. More praise to be heaped. Well, I want to commend Ms. Rutter and her leadership, and for the collaborative nature with which the Kennedy Center worked with the staff, and I think it really resulted in a more sensitive design and a frankly, a visionary plan. Sort of reminds me of a musical composition that sort of all of a sudden comes together. And I think that the celebration of the public space, the commitment to getting to the river as a, as a gesture to connect, and removing the pavilion, as Mr. Hart said, was not an easy decision for you, but I think a really important one. And I think the enhancements for the program expansion would solidify the Kennedy Center's role as a center of inspiration and creativity in keeping with President Kennedy's legacy. So thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Hearing no further discussion. It's been moved and seconded. All in favor of the EDR, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Congratulations, Ms. Rutter.
Yay, thank you very much. We'll see you again after the summer. Thank you.
See you soon.
A word or two about the next item. The, we're going to take the next two items, Agenda Items 5C and 5D together. 5C is the closing of Maryland Avenue between Fourth and Sixth Streets Southwest and the transfer of jurisdiction for, of portions of Maryland Avenue, Independence Avenue, Fourth and Sixth Streets Southwest. And Agenda Item 5D is the final site and building plans for the Eisenhower Memorial. What, what we'll do is we will take the, the staff presentation, we'll do both elements. We're actually going to flip them and do 5D first. Then we'll take public comment on it all, and then we'll have two separate votes. But we'll vote on the design first, because if that is not approved, then we would not do the jurisdiction transfer. So we think that's the, kind of the streamlined and comprehensive way to do it, and it, it is all one project and it keeps it together. And so with that understanding, we welcome Ms. Hirsch.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman and members of the Commission. The National Park Service, on behalf of the Eisenhower Memorial Commission, has submitted the Dwight D. Eisenhower Memorial for your final review and approval. As the Chairman mentioned, today's presentation is also going to cover a related item on the agenda, the closing of Maryland Avenue and the associated transfers of jurisdiction. As the Chairman mentioned, you'll be taking two separate actions on these projects. Today's presentation has been organized into several sections that are outlined on this slide. The first section will cover background information on the memorial and site selection. The second section will cover the design evolution of the memorial and the significant design changes that have been made at each stage. These two sections are meant to provide context for new Commissioners who have not taken part in the Commission's previous reviews of the project. Following these two introductory sections, I'll give an overview of the final plans, focusing on the design modifications that have been made since the Commission's preliminary review, and how the applicant has responded to the Commission's comments. I'll cover the specific requests that the Commission has made with respect to the Commemorative Works Act, and then provide the recommendation on the memorial before moving on to discuss the street closure and transfer of jurisdiction, and then that recommendation. So to start with the background on the project, I'm going to discuss the site selection, the design principles adopted by NCPC, and the overall concept for the memorial. The four-acre site is located in southwest Washington, DC. It's outlined on the slide in red. The site is bound on the east by Fourth Street, on the south by the LBJ Building, Department of Education Building, and on the west by Sixth Street. Maryland Avenue traverses the site from Sixth to Fourth Street on access with the Capitol, and then there are several federal office buildings that surround the site. You have the Wilbur Wright Building on the west, the Wilbur J. Kahn Building to the east, and then the Smithsonian's National Air and Space Museum to the north across Independence So here's a closer look at the existing site. The site is currently under three jurisdictions. The roadway is under the jurisdiction of the District's Department of Transportation. Part of Reservation 5 in this area is under the control of the Park Service and currently contains a community garden and fitness area. And then to the south is the LGB, LBJ Plaza that was constructed and is under the control of the General Services Administration. And as I've mentioned, part of the Commission's review today is to approve the transfers of jurisdiction to the site to NPS, to create a unified parcel for the memorial, and also to allow for the maintenance of the memorial to be done by one federal agency, the Park So turning to site selection, after considering many sites, Eisenhower Memorial Commission identified this site as the preferred in 2006. There were several reasons for that, mainly its size and ability to accommodate a major presidential memorial, its accessibility, and the thematic relationships to the agencies that occupy the surrounding buildings, and the connection to Eisenhower's legacy. With its site approval, NCPC adopted seven design principles that were incorporated into the Commission's finding of no significant impact that was adopted under the National Environmental Policy Act. So the design principles are listed on this slide. I'm not going to review them in detail, as many of you are familiar with them, but to emphasize what their overall, overall intent was, was to create a memorial with an active urban park that reflects and respects characteristics of the Loma Fonte Plan in terms of regarding the shaping of view corridors and public spaces, and also to create a place for commemorative reflection that also functions as a park and can accommodate public gatherings. At the Commission's last review of the project this past October, the Commission found that the preliminary plan satisfied all of these principles and approved the project. As I move through the design evolution, I will refer to the design guidelines and how they have been used as a tool in the Commission's review. So the applicant has indicated that they've taken inspiration for the Eisenhower Memorial from the Lincoln Memorial in trying to create a layered experience. The overall urging concept of the memorial is to commemorate Eisenhower as a military general, as well as President of the United States, but also to commemorate the humble way in which he approached these roles based on his Midwestern values that he acquired during his upbringing in Abilene, Kansas. These values of strength, humility, and modesty guided his decision and fueled his future achievements. The memorial incorporates several elements to execute this concept, memorial core that will contain freestanding sculpture, barber leaf blocks and quotations, large stainless steel tapestry and columns, an overall landscape design, a memorial information center, the pedestrian promenade known as LBJ Promenade, and then a lighting scheme. These elements have remained consistent at each stage of the project, but the manner in which the applicant has used them has evolved over time. So moving into the design evolution of the project, I'm going to highlight the major milestones and then focus on the Commission's previous reviews and actions. So many of the major project milestones are listed on this slide. Just to highlight a few, the authorization for the memorial was in 1999, and as I mentioned, the site selection process concluded in 2006, and NCPC adopted the seven design principles. The formal reviews of the memorial design began at NCPC and the U.S. Commission of Fine Arts in 2011. And at the same time as the design review process moved forward, Section 106 consultation on the memorial design was conducted over a period of several years. That consultation process considered the impacts of the memorial and the adverse effects caused on historic properties, including the Loma Fonte Plan. Consultation, Section 106 consultation concluded with the signing of an MOA in 2012, but since that time, additional consultation has taken place in accordance with the terms of the memorandum of agreement. The consultation on the final design has concluded, and as noticed by, as noted by the District's State Historic Preservation Officer in their final comments, the SHPO considers the adverse effects to be minimized and the goals of the Section 106 process to have been achieved. As I mentioned, the Commission last reviewed the project in 2014 in October and approved the preliminary plans, noting that all the design principles have been satisfied. Most recently, CFA approved the final plans in this past June, and, which brings us to the Commission's final review. So over the next few slides, I'll review the earlier designs of the memorial and the Commission's previous actions. I'll be highlighting the major design changes that have taken place. So in 2011, the Commission reviewed a concept for the memorial which included all of the primary elements. The, at the center of the memorial was the memorial core, which included sculpture and quotations from Eisenhower's speeches and addresses as both a general and a president. In the south was the large-scale stainless steel tapestry, which is made of braided cable. There were also two smaller tapestries on the north side of the site that you can see here. Just to mention, the south tapestry ran the full length of the LBJ Building in this earliest concept. The tapestries would be supported by very large columns, and the idea was that the tapestries would feature artwork or images of Abilene, Kansas, Eisenhower's hometown. The overall scale of the columns was approximately what they are proposed in the final design, which is approximately 10 feet in diameter and 80 feet tall. The bottom of the tapestries were raised above the ground plane by approximately 20 feet, and that was to allow pedestrian circulation underneath. Outside of the memorial core, the landscape design featured large grassy areas, and trees were arranged in an informal way in reference to the Kansas landscape. The primary pedestrian pathway was located along Maryland Avenue, which moves diagonally through the site, and there was a memorial information center located to the southeast side of the site to provide restrooms, ranger contact station, storage for the Park Service, and a small bookstore. And then between the tapestry and the LBJ Building itself, there was a pedestrian promenade, which was proposed to create a transition between the memorial and the building itself. So here you can see photos of the model of the memorial in 2011. At that time, the Commission noted their support for a modern and innovative approach to the memorial, but found that the concept was not successful in meeting the design principles. That was primarily... That was primarily related to issues of scale, the relationship of the memorial to the surrounding precinct, and the framing of the site, and then the views to the Capitol and the impact on the Maryland Avenue right-of-way. These comments tied directly to three of the design principles, related to the preservation of reciprocal views along Maryland Avenue, the use of Leontes principles to shape the memorial site, and respecting the building lines of the adjacent streets and buildings. In April of 2014, the applicant submitted preliminary plans, and the commission reiterated at that time its support for a modern and innovative approach to the memorial. There were several significant design changes that were made in these plans. The east and west tapestries were rotated 90 degrees, and that allowed the site to be framed by the three tapestries. This also allowed the view along Maryland Avenue to be re-centered on the Capitol. The tapestry along the south was reduced in length by approximately one bay and centered on the LBJ Building. At that time, the overall length of the tapestry was approximately 450 feet. By doing that, that opened up views of the east and west ends of the LBJ Building from Independence Avenue. In addition, the memorial core had been further refined as the arrangement of the sculptural elements was reorganized. The landscape design had also advanced and featured a groom lawn along Maryland Avenue and the cartway, as well as the pathways that were leading from the corners of the sites towards the memorial core. Larger canopy and smaller understory trees were proposed to emphasize the layering experience of the memorial. And finally, the design for the LBJ Promenade had been advanced, and the information center was reoriented on the site but remained in the same general location. The commission at this time found that the project was consistent with four of the design principles but inconsistent with three of them, and therefore, the commission disapproved the project. This was primarily due to the scale and configuration of the three tapestries, as well as the impact on the Maryland Avenue view shed, the relationship of the design to the building line established by the buildings along Independence Avenue, and as well as the relationship of the memorial to the adjacent buildings. At this time, the commission also requested that the applicant address certain general planning-related issues, including pedestrian circulation, perimeter security, and lighting. And finally, at this review, the commission found that based on the results of several rounds of tests conducted by the applicant, that the proposed stainless steel tapestries would meet the durability criteria of the Commemorative Works Act. So as I mentioned, this past October, the applicant returned with revised preliminary plans for the memorial. The primary design changes at this point was the elimination of the east and west tapestries. In place of the tapestries were two freestanding columns. These columns are the same size as the columns that are supporting the south tapestry, but there were no other changes to the size of the south tapestry at this point. The freestanding columns in the south tapestry were serving to define a volume of a larger park space that marked the beginning of the transition from the urban environment into a park before entering the commemorative core. The commission found that by eliminating the east and west tapestries, there was a substantial improvement to the view sheds towards the Capitol and the memorial's relationship to the surrounding buildings on the east and west. While there were memorial elements that were located in the Maryland Avenue right-of-way, the commission agreed with staff's analysis that there was a balance between establishing a presidential memorial on the site with its surrounding historic context. Therefore, the commission found that the three design principles that had not been met previously were satisfied, and the commission approved the preliminary plans. So moving to the final plans that are before you today, I'm going to primarily focus on the changes that have been made since the commission's preliminary approval. The final plans represent refinements to the preliminary design. I will give a high-level overview of all the memorial elements, but as the commission has previously found the project dissatisfied the design principles, I will not be covering those in depth. However, a full discussion is included in the staff report. Where appropriate, I'll be integrating how the applicant has addressed the commission's previous comments. So as a reminder, on this slide, you see the commission's comments related to pedestrian circulation, perimeter security, and lighting. With respect to pedestrian circulation, the question was whether circulation was too narrowly focused on circulation from the corners. It did not consider mid-block pedestrian patterns. With respect to perimeter security, the commission requested specific modifications to the use of bollards at the memorial overlook. And in terms of lighting, the commission was focused on the prominence of the Capitol and making sure that the memorial lighting did not detract from it. In addition, in a subsequent review, in the October review, the commission also made general comments regarding strengthening the memorial as a layered experience, enhancing the openness of Maryland Avenue, and improving the relationship to the LBJ Building. So here's the final site plan that retains the elements seen in previous designs, including the memorial core, the stainless steel tapestry on the south, the two freestanding columns towards the north, the memorial information center, the LBJ Promenade, and then the overall landscape plan. Here's a photo of the model, and the relationships can be seen between the tapestry, the freestanding columns, the memorial core, and the urban surroundings. The composition of the memorial core is consistent with the preliminary plans in that the core serves as the center of the commemoration recognizing Eisenhower's achievements as a general and a president. This area includes freestanding and boughrelief sculpture, as well as quotations taken from Eisenhower's speeches. The size and scale of the sculpture and blocks that they sit upon has not changed since the preliminary design. In addition, I should mention there's a sculpture of young Eisenhower sitting on the edge in this location of the memorial overlook wall, looking out over his achievements, his future achievements as a general and the president. The primary modification in this area, since the preliminary plans, relates to the sculpture commemorating Eisenhower as a president. Rather than a single sculpture of Eisenhower, as was previously proposed, Eisenhower is standing in the Oval Office, flanked on one side by a military advisor and on the other side by two civilian advisors. The memorial retains the large stainless steel tapestry along the southern edge of the site. The tapestry is composed, as I've mentioned, stainless steel cable, various sizes that are welded together to create an image of Abilene, Kansas. The tapestry attaches to a cable structural system which spans between the columns. The tapestry serves as both a commemorative element but also provides an urban site planning element in terms of providing a separation between the LBJ Building and the memorial. Since the commission's preliminary approval, the imagery for the tapestry has been refined and now includes Eisenhower's homestead, which you see on the left in the bottom image. With respect to the columns, a commemorative element has been added to each. This is the northwest column, which is dedicated to General Eisenhower. It will feature a plaque with the five-star general insignia in bronze, and below that will be inlaid lettering indicating Eisenhower's title and years of service. Here's the northeast column, which is dedicated to Eisenhower as a president. It will feature the 1953 inaugural committee medallion and Eisenhower's title and years of service as president. Both of these plaques are proposed to be located on the south side of the column. The overall concept, moving on to the landscape design, remains consistent with the preliminary plans as well. The plan on the top is the October plan and on the bottom is the final plan. It retains the approach walkways from the corners of the site. The memorial core paving is special and distinct from the walkway paving, a groom lawn along Maryland Avenue, and then looser lawn on either side of that. In addition, the large canopy and smaller flowering understory trees remain in the design. Primary changes to highlight are that the street trees have been regulated so that they are evenly spaced along Independence Avenue and then respaced along Fourth and Sixth Streets. And in addition, as you can see in the October plan, there were openings in the tree canopy. Those have been eliminated in the final plans. This is partially in an effort to strengthen the Maryland Avenue corridor as the primary open space and view corridor. The changes to the landscape plan have addressed several of the commission's comments related to pedestrian circulation, enhancing the openness of Maryland Avenue, and strengthening the layered experience of the memorial. Regarding pedestrian circulation, as I mentioned, the break in the trees along Independence has been eliminated, and with that modification, the vistas towards the memorial core have been reduced, and therefore pedestrians will be less likely to walk across the lawn towards the memorial core. Based on current pedestrian circulation patterns, the design team also believes that the primary pedestrian circulation into the site will occur from the corners with a secondary entrance at Maryland and Sixth Street. The design team did consider adding a paved pathway along Maryland Avenue, but ultimately determined that a paved path would interrupt the site organization. Staff agrees that by eliminating the break in trees along Independence, that the applicant has addressed the commission's comments related to circulation. With respect to enhancing the openness of Maryland Avenue, the granite curb has increased in width from approximately nine inches to 18 inches. The increase in the curb is meant to emphasize the cartway and also separate the groom lawn along Maryland Avenue with the taller grasses on either side of it. In addition, the allay of trees along Maryland Avenue has been reinforced to emphasize the view towards the Capitol. So with the changes to the landscape design, including the elimination of the openings between the trees along Independence, the allay of trees, the larger granite curb, the openness of Maryland Avenue has been enhanced. The next series of images emphasizes the layered experience of the memorial and how it has been strengthened by the landscape design. You'll see the use of larger canopy trees as well as the smaller understory trees. So here you can see a view of the memorial from a fourth and Independence, and you can see the memorial core in the distance in this location. This image is taken standing just past the eastern freestanding column as one begins to approach the memorial core, again, which you can see in the background. The understory flowering trees are framing the approach to the memorial core along the This image is standing in the memorial core looking toward Fourth Street. You can see the Wilbur Cohen Building in the background. And then this is standing just outside the memorial core, again, looking towards Fourth And then finally, a view standing on the groom lawn of Maryland Avenue looking towards The final plans continue to include a memorial information center. The design of this building has not changed since the commission's preliminary approval. It's a modest-sized building on the southeast corner of the site, and as I've mentioned, will contain restrooms, maintenance and storage facilities for the Park Service, a ranger contact station, and a small bookstore. The final plans also maintain the pedestrian promenade between the memorial and the LBJ Building. The promenade is intended to create a distinct zone separate from the memorial that recognizes the entrance to the building and serves as transition area into the memorial. It's broken into three areas. At the west end is a permanent exterior exhibit space, and it also features some terrace seating. At the east end, it's adjacent to the cafeteria within the building, and so outdoor seating will be provided in this location. And then at the center section, which provides access to the building entry, it's designed in a way to provide space for larger public gatherings. The LBJ Promenade also serves as a security function for the building. Much of the security has been incorporated into this retaining wall here. As seen in these images, the promenade will provide a variety of programming and educational opportunities that will improve the relationship between the memorial and the building. With regard to perimeter security and the commission's comments, the number of bollards at the memorial overlook has been reduced. And rather than the bollards at this terrace seating area in this location, a structural wall will be used. So this is a comparison of the October plans versus the final plans on the bottom. So at the memorial overlook, this is the final plan on the left, two bollards will be used rather than the walls that were proposed in an information session to the commission in November of 2014. This change was in response to the comments from the Commission of Fine Arts that bollards will allow for a more open stair than the walls that were proposed. In addition, the stairway was narrowed and the overlook was enlarged so that fewer bollards would be needed. Here are details of the wall at the terrace seating area compared to the previous design on the upper right, which incorporated a line of bollards. With the design changes that have been made at the memorial overlook, as well as at the terrace seating area, the commission's comments related to perimeter security have been addressed. Additional details on the lighting design have been provided with the final plans. With respect to the lighting design, the design team considered the location of the memorial within the context of other monumental avenues in the city, as well as how other memorials and focal points are focal points of vistas in the city. The lighting plan calls for a horizontal layering of light. The ideas of this would also reinforce the layered experience of the memorial and that the transition from human scale to larger-scale memorial elements. The first layer of light focuses on the pathway surfaces and will include downlights. Here you can see the effect of using downlights and bench lights to illuminate the pathways leading towards the memorial core. And then the view toward the memorial core shows the intermediate layer of light that will highlight memorial objects. The upper layer of light will illuminate the tapestry, but the upper section of the tapestry will be darker above the tree canopy as light will fade as it reaches the top. This rendering shows the various layers of light that will be used at the memorial core. Continuous uplights will be used for the elements, but in different ways. The tapestry will be uplit to provide a backdrop for the site. Uplights will also illuminate the Eisenhower inscription wall that the statue of young Eisenhower sits upon. This is intended to give the effect that the memorial has a glowing center. Freestanding sculpture will also be, and the boughrelief blocks will also have linear uplights, but they will be backlit in order to bring out the textures of the boughrelief The lighting along Maryland Avenue has been designed to allow visual progression, and the view of the Capitol will remain unimpeded from glare or lighting of the memorial. Staff's primary concern regarding the lighting plan was that the Capitol dome remain the prominent feature of the view shed and that the memorial lighting not detract from the As one walks along Maryland Avenue, the light is directed down to the surface to keep glare at a minimum, and the Capitol dome remains the prominent element of the view shed. Staff finds that the lighting design does not diminish the prominence of the Capitol dome within the Maryland Avenue view shed and that the applicant has addressed the So as I discussed earlier, with respect to the Commemorative Works Act, the commission found the project met the criteria found the project met the criteria in October this past year. The commission requested that the applicant confirm with the final plans that the stainless steel material and welds continue to meet the durability criteria. Also that the maintenance program that's proposed would not cause weld failure, and that the applicant provide operational protocols to avoid danger to public safety during times when snow and ice might accumulate on the tapestries. The applicant submitted some supplemental information that demonstrated that additional tests completed on the material and welds indicate that the CWA criteria will be satisfied. In addition, a maintenance program was provided that recommended power washing on an annual basis for the tapestry, and that tests showed no weld failure occurred when power washing was tested. And finally, with respect to operational protocols, these have also been developed and indicate that the design will promote melt-in-place strategy for snow and ice, and only in certain limited circumstances would the memorial be closed for public safety. And so with respect to the memorial design, it's the executive director's recommendation that the commission approve the final site and building plans for the memorial to confirm that the final memorial design satisfies NCPC's design principles and that the commission's action to approve the final plans will not have a significant impact on the human environment. To note that the applicant has modified the design to respond to the commission's previous comments regarding pedestrian circulation, perimeter security, and lighting. And to note that the applicant has responded to the commission's recommendation to strengthen the overall concept of the memorial as a layered experience, to enhance the openness of the Maryland Avenue right-of-way, and to improve the symbolic and physical relationship to the Department of Ed Building. And finally, also to note that the applicant has demonstrated that the tapestry material and welds will continue to meet the CWA durability criteria, and to note that the applicant has submitted a maintenance plan, including operational protocols, that will address matters such as cleaning and public safety issues. So I'm going to move directly into the associated street closure and transfer of jurisdiction. What you see in this graphic is the area of Maryland Avenue that's proposed to be closed, and then the portions of the adjacent street space along Independence, Sixth, and Fourth Street that will be transferred to the Park Service. This will unify the separate parcels into one site for the construction of the memorial, as well as management of the site by the Park Service. Street closure is not consistent with policies in the comp plan that encourage the protection of lawn font streets, including the visual and functional qualities of the rights-of-way. The comp plan recognizes the importance of the lawn font plan and establishing the urban design framework for the city. And policies in the comp plan also encourage the protection of streets as vehicular thoroughfares. The street closure and placement of memorial elements within the 160-foot right-of-way of Maryland Avenue are therefore not consistent with the comp plan policies and would cause adverse effects on the lawn font plan. However, the adverse effects were discussed in the Section 106 consultation process, and while the adverse effects have not been eliminated, they have been minimized through design modifications and were addressed in the memorandum of agreement. So staff is recommending that the commission note both that the street closure is inconsistent with the policies in the comprehensive plan and would cause adverse effects on the lawn font plan, but that the adverse effects were addressed through the Section 106 consultation and MOA. In addition, that Maryland Avenue should only be closed upon NPS issuing a construction permit for the memorial, and finally, to approve associated transfers of jurisdictions in order to assemble land for the site and have it be managed by one entity. That concludes my presentation. I'm available for questions, as well as members of the design team.
Great. Thank you, Ms. Hirsch, very much. Your presentation has covered both 5D and 5C, the final design approval and the closing of the street and jurisdiction transfer. Before we go to public comment, among commission members, are there any immediate questions for Ms. Hirsch on either of these elements?
I just had a question on the material, because it keeps on coming up with brown. Is it, what's the material, the columns and the monument itself?
The columns will be clad in limestone.
Okay.
And concrete structure.
Other questions before public comment, Mr. May? We'll take public comment now. We have eight people signed up between the two. Eight people, nine presentations between the two. First, we have, if you're speaking for the organization, you have five minutes. If you're speaking for yourself, you have three. There's a clock on the wall. First, we have Mr. Sam Roche, who is with Right by Ike, and you are speaking first, Mr. Roche, on the street closure. And then you are also signed up to speak on the design.
Right.
So the street closure first, and then we'll flow right into the other.
Shall we take those together?
You have.
10 minutes for this?
You have 10 minutes.
Oh, great.
Between the two.
Okay. Well, thank you very much for the opportunity.
About to say you need to use it all.
Okay. I'll do my best.
Welcome.
Thank you for the opportunity to speak today. I represent a group called Right by Ike, project for a new Eisenhower memorial, and we're looking to have the Eisenhower memorial designed through public competition, which is the usual way for memorials to be designed and built, but which has been ignored in this case. One controversial aspect of the proposed design for the Eisenhower memorial is that it would close a portion of Maryland Avenue. I'm going to speak about this feature with reference to handouts provided to the commissioners. The first slide in your handout shows a reconstruction of the lawn font plan by the landscape architect and historian Albert Peetz, who, to my knowledge, produced the most complete reconstruction of Lawn Font's original intentions. In this reconstruction plan, Maryland Avenue is on the right, connecting the Capitol to the Potomac and nearing Pennsylvania Avenue across the Mall. That Maryland Avenue represents a strong boundary for the memorial core, for the monumental core, is evident in the second slide, which shows Peetz's axonometric reconstruction of the central lawn font plan. The second slide, which shows the same view as proposed by the Senate Park Commission in 1901, shows that the McMinn Plan confirmed Maryland Avenue as a boundary for the Mall and a mirror for Pennsylvania Avenue, and the major connection between Capitol Hill and what became the Jefferson Memorial. The aerial view of Union Square at the foot of Capitol Hill in the fourth slide shows these characteristics of Maryland Avenue in more detail and at a larger scale. Three aerial views of Central Washington from Capitol Hill in Slides Four, Five, and Six in 1871, 1930, and 1980, respectively, show that the intentions of Lawn Font and the McMinn Commission have been consistently, if partially, translated into reality. These are the plans and the physical circumstances your commission is charged to preserve, as shown in the last slide, which reads, "The National Capitol Planning Commission is the central federal planning agency for the federal government and the national capital, created to preserve the important historical and natural features of the national capital. This is the establishment and purpose of the National Capitol Planning Commission, as elaborated in the National Capitol Planning Act of 1968." Will this commission vacate a portion of a major element of these plans and their translation into reality in this context? That concludes my remarks on the closure of Maryland Avenue. Thank you.
And you may continue for your remarks on the final design.
Thank you. The design we are considering will not likely be built, no matter what your commission decides today. There's widespread disagreement about whether its scale and character are appropriate to President Eisenhower in Washington, D.C. The design is also a very expensive one. Current estimates place its cost at twice the original budget and more than twice the cost of past presidential memorials. Even these estimates are imprecise because the design will use unproven materials and techniques for the first time and on an unprecedented scale. Amidst controversy about appropriateness and cost, the design has received no public funding for construction from Congress since 2012. Last month, lawmakers in Congress, including Eisenhower Memorial Commissioner Congressman Mike Simpson, called for the design process to start over. Nor can withheld public money likely be replaced through private donations. The Eisenhower Memorial Commission has secured only $450,000 in private contributions, much of that from one donor, though it has paid three times this amount in fundraising costs. Meanwhile, another memorial commission that was authorized much later than President Eisenhower's is planning to complete a memorial to World War I in just three years. Unlike President Eisenhower's, this memorial will be designed through public competition and is open to everyone, and the World War I Memorial Commission will soon exhibit to the public the designs of three to five finalists. The World War I memorial is expected to cost less than $25 million and will be funded entirely through private donations. This timely return to the usual inclusive public process for designing national memorials may raise public and official interest in redesigning this one. This is a possibility the Eisenhower Memorial Commission intends to forestall with help from your commission by presenting your final approval as a mandate to Congress to change its mind about public funding for this design. As Eisenhower Memorial Commission spokeswoman Chris Sinco said, "Congress should take a lesson from the federal approval agencies. If they believe the design is appropriate for commemorating Eisenhower, they should take their word for it. They're all part of the federal government, right? If arguments like this one can't persuade lawmakers to change their minds, the design you are considering today won't be built." Your endorsement of this design, however, through final approval, will likely undermine your commission's stewardship of the Lawn Font and McMinn Plans. By removing part of an avenue that is a major feature of these and subsequent plans, and by introducing very tall elements into that avenue's right-of-way that will give the views up and down, that's up and down it a different character from other streets in the national capital, the design you are considering will compromise those plans. The drawing in your handout shows just how big the proposed elements in the Maryland Avenue right-of-way will be. One of these elements, the column on the right, is 80 feet tall, as tall as the Lincoln Memorial on the left, but without its two-part composition that helps break down the large scale. The design you are considering places two of these 80-foot columns on one side of the Maryland Avenue right-of-way. By proving such a design and allowing that right-of-way to be impinged on, you'll be acting against your charge to preserve the historical and natural features of the national capital, which include not only the avenues of the Lawn Font Plan, but also their open rights-of-way. There's a reason memorials require congressional action as well as multiple planning approvals to get built. Agreement among these institutions represents the consensus a memorial design must represent to speak to all of us as a public symbol. You will frustrate rather than advance this consensus if you approve a design that has divided public and official opinion since it was unveiled five years ago. Perhaps rejecting the design would also aggravate controversy. There will be no harm to larger consensus or your own responsibilities, however, if you take more time to consider the effects of this design for the Eisenhower memorial on the Lawn Font and McMinn Plans you were charged to protect. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Roche, very much. The remaining speakers on the design are Neil Flanagan, and then followed by General Borling. Is Mr. Flanagan here?
Welcome.
Mr. Flanagan, General Borling, and then Justin Schubau.
I want to thank the commission for evaluating this memorial so thoroughly and professionally. My name is Neil Flanagan. I'm representing myself. I endorse the executive director's recommendation, and by now, we've heard a million questionable excuses for why this memorial shouldn't be built. Every venue has brought out a clown car of kitchen sinks, but what wasn't straight-up untrue has been resolved now by, amicably by, a celebrated architect checking his ego and adapting his design to participate in our commemorative system. Whatever. All this noise has distracted us from what the memorial says. Some critics have quipped that it's like looking too closely at a drive-in movie. Maybe they're on to something. If we look at this like a movie, we might find some insight. It is, after all, a bunch of scenes placed together off each other. Coming down from the hill, it begins like a lot of great movies with a landscape, Kansas. A homemade in a vast field, winter on the plains is unforgiving and indifferent. Getting closer, there on the columns is a title. It says it's about a president. You go on, but it's not a president, you see. It's a general rallying his troops, larger-than-life, and beyond that scene, ships carrying soldiers to a beach. It asks you to make a connection on your own. How does one lead a war like that? To the side, you see a central man, the central man leading again, but in a cabinet room. And between them, you see catch sight of a teenager, no bigger than you. They're all the same person, his name written in giant letters, all caps, Dwight D. Eisenhower. That monumental name and those columns might make you feel small and threatened, and sure you are small, but so is that kid, and the world is as dangerous as it was in 1944. The trick is, you never see the young man alone. No matter where you stand, you're always looking past him to some consequential future, cutting from one time to another, flash-forward and flash-back. He's at once a barefoot boy, the leader of millions, and a name written in stone. Like our best memorials, this tells a story, not some fable of predestined greatness, but a story of a human who did the right thing when the opportunity arose. His life is the best of all possible stories we tell ourselves and the foil to our darkest tragedies. But like the best movies, the looseness of the central figures gives us room to think on our own. Was it something about Kansas? Is his arc still possible now? And who is our farm boy, barefoot and in the fields, for our time? This invites everyone to bring their own experiences to Eisenhower's life. That's how the memory will survive, the ability to evoke general concerns to the life of this particular man. I think some of those critics are right. It is like a movie. It's the kind of epic we haven't seen in a long time. Thank you, and I urge the commission to pass the resolution.
Thank you, Mr. Flanagan. General Borling, followed by Justin Schubau, followed by Marion Watkins. Welcome.
Mr. Chairman, members of the commission.
You need to stand there.
If I stand here in front of this, over there?
Stand there for the, we have cameras, so.
I was hoping to spare the people the camera view, actually.
Yeah, right.
Be that as it may, everyone wants a piece of Eisenhower. I spent eight hours a day or more for two years in his presence. Now, if you're the commissioners, I think you ought to be, you'd be saying, how the hell did you do that? I know I'm old, der, but not that old. And yet, at SHAPE, the Supreme Headquarters, I sat at the very desk with the plaque on it, "The General Eisenhower established Allied Command Europe and made himself the first supreme commander." And as one of the senior colonels at SHAPE at that time, it was my honor to sit at that desk for over two years. And I talk in my outline comments that I forwarded to you about the image and the lineage of General Eisenhower. As I say, everybody wants a piece of him, but the military family especially thinks about the lineage of the great captain who helped win, in fact, directed World War II, and then was the shepherd of the nation as its president. And so that's the lineage that impacts all of us who've had the honor to serve in the United States military. But the image of the man is interesting, and I feel a little bit like I'm in Amadeus, where Salieri is walking with the emperor after hearing Mozart, and Salieri is green with envy, because Mozart was marvelous. And yet, Salieri turns to the emperor after being asked, well, how was it? And he said, you know, I think there were too many notes, and I suspect that after 16 years, there have been too many words. I come as a first-timer to this group, feeling somewhat like Horatio at the bridge, but I will tell you Eisenhower might have said, 16 years, my God, we could have fought and won four World War II's. So in my comments, I keep coming back to, what is it that Eisenhower would want? What is the son of the plains desiring if he could be here today? Everyone, as I say, wants a piece of him, but is something grandiose? Is something so overpowering? Is something that doesn't speak to the essential modesty and the solidity and the conciliatory nature of the man? Correct. And the answer is, I don't know. I don't know. But I do know that the processes, I have researched of late, brought on by congressional conversations and by certain business interests with which I share back in the heartland, all have evinced the notion that the process which went for credentials first and lack of public participation deferred, rejected, somehow needs to be reset. And I think I heard words to that effect, notwithstanding that fighter pilot ears have been damaged by jet engines over the years. Everyone knows this process has gone on and been convoluted over the time that we've talked to, and there have been congressional reservations and public reservations, and I guess, again, I stand as one who suggests that, is it not possible to reset, to go back and to, in fact, offer the public the opportunity to be participatory? Certainly, the current design could be involved in that. You may not think you have the power. You may not think you can use the power, but I think you abuse the power. would drive Eisenhower crazy with respect to this process. I most humbly come before you, just as a single voice, but urging you, please, at this 11th hour, at this 11th hour, to be those idealists without illusions who can bring us back from the brink and let us go forward together as a nation to do what Eisenhower would want us to do. Thank you very much.
Thank you, General. Next up is Justin Schubau, followed by Marion Watkins. Welcome.
Mr. Chairman, distinguished commissioners, my name is Justin Schubau. I speak on behalf of the National Civic Arts Society. Before I get to the heart of my remarks, I just want to emphasize, to follow up on what was previously said, is that this will likely be the first memorial in the city that will be regularly closed due to snow and ice. You might call it the, look up, before you get killed by snow and ice memorial. Today, I would like to focus on a crucial issue that you have not previously addressed, namely what the memorial is going to look like at night. The key rendering is the one I have provided in our handout, this is a big full-color image, which is taken from page 62 of the applicant's submission. It shows the nighttime view looking up Maryland Avenue toward the Capitol. As you know, the tapestry juts far out into the right-of-way, and as you can see, from this perspective, the tapestry will look like a glowing billboard or movie screen. Its distracting brightness will undeniably ruin the vista to the Capitol. It's important to note that the brightness of the tapestry will, in reality, be even stronger than you see in this rendering. This is because the rendering does not show the effects of the office lights from the Education Building on the memorial. During the darker months of the year, the rear of the tapestry will be lit up by thousands of windows on the north side of the building. At the Section 106 Historic Preservation Meeting in December, both the representative from NTPC and from the DC State Historic Preservation Office expressed concern about the brightness of this section of the tapestry. As a result, both of them requested that the applicant submit renderings of the design in which the westernmost bay of the tapestry was removed, and for symmetry's sake, the easternmost bay was removed as well. The applicant never did provide such a rendering, but we have made one for you. It's on the second page of the handout. Now ask yourself, which of these renderings shows greater respect for the iconic view to the Capitol? This is no small matter. To quote from the October EDR, which this commission approved, quote, "The comprehensive plan for the Capitol City encourages agencies to design exterior lighting in a manner that contributes to the Capitol's nighttime image and respects the established hierarchy among the symbols and features of the nation's Capitol. Staff notes that as the applicant begins to develop the memorial exterior lighting plan, extreme caution should be exercised with regard to the lighting of any memorial elements located within the historic Maryland Avenue right-of-way. This is a stricter standard than that in the Section 106 process. We do not believe that the part of a memorial that looks like a drive-in movie screen demonstrates extreme caution. This portion of the design belongs in Times Square or on Hollywood Boulevard, not ruining a vista to the Capitol. There is an easy solution to the problem: simply ask the applicant to reduce the tapestry by a single bay on the east and west. The tapestry would still remain gargantuan and thus would do all the artistic work it is required to. Consider that this commission has already required that the applicant remove parts of the design, namely the giant side panels, and the applicant did so remove them, even though the applicant had previously said they were essential to the design. At the very least, this commission should ask the applicant to return with renderings of the alternative we are proposing, the very renderings that NTPC and DC SHIP-O staff requested at the Section 106 meeting. There is no rush here. The Senate and the House have zeroed all construction funds for the memorial for the next fiscal year, and the House's budget language made clear they will never support the current design. Quote, "It is inconceivable and unacceptable that a memorial to Dwight D. Eisenhower could be designed, approved, and built without the active support of the Eisenhower family. Legitimate issues raised by the Eisenhower family over the size, scope, and values reflected in the memorial's design have been routinely disregarded, even as the Eisenhower Memorial Commission has continued to aggressively pursue required project approvals," I would say, "such as this one." And listen to the Senate budget's language. Construction should not commence until there is broad support among the public, the Eisenhower family, and Congress concerning the design and construction. As for where the public stands, consider that private fundraising for the memorial has been a disaster. The Eisenhower Commission has spent $1.4 million on fundraising, yet has raised just $450,000, and $300,000 of that are from a single donor. Last month, Washingtonian Magazine published an article with the headline, "Everyone Still Hates the Planned Eisenhower Memorial." To conclude, we respectfully request that NTPC listen to Congress and the American people, and that you postpone approving the memorial at this time. Thank you.
Ms. Watkins? Ms. Watkins will be followed by Thomas McInerney, and then Sharice Ross.
Hi, good afternoon. I'm Marion Watkins from the Office of Senator Bob Dole. Senator Dole has asked that the following statement in support of the Eisenhower Memorial be part of the record of this meeting today. Good afternoon. I'm former Senator Bob Dole, a World War II veteran, and I thank you for permitting me to submit a statement in support of the Eisenhower Memorial. First, I want to thank Executive Director Marcel Acosta for his recommendation to approve the Eisenhower Memorial. During World War II, I proudly served my country in the 10th Mountain Division under Ike's leadership. After I was gravely wounded in Italy on April 14, 1945, I spent 39 months in the hospital, during which time I met many friends, including the late Senator Danny Inoue, who was gravely wounded fighting in the war. I remember talking to Danny about the war and the victory in Europe under General Eisenhower's leadership. Ike was our hero. I believe he was a hero to most of the 16 and 1/2 million Americans who served in World War II, as well as to countless others across the nation. It's now 70 years later. I want the country I fought for to honor Ike now. It's past time for Ike to be memorialized and that the Eisenhower Memorial be approved. I was proud to serve as co-chair of the fundraising effort to help build the World War II memorial. Those of us who served in that war appreciate that we have been honored with our own memorial for all time. Ike is the man who made victory possible, and as president, he helped lead us through the Cold War and into the 21st century. There are only about a million of us left who served in World War II. I say "only," but that's a lot of veterans, a million aging American heroes who revere Ike and want to honor him before we're all gone. I hope you will vote unanimously to approve this memorial, honoring one of the greatest Americans of all time, and that we can take your approval up to Capitol Hill and say, "Let's get it done." Again, I thank you for your time and consideration of my views on this timely and important matter. God bless America. And I might add, a special thank you, Senator Dole wanted me to be sure to extend his sincere gratitude for the work of this commission years ago in approving the World War II memorial, which I think, I would hope to say everyone in this room would agree, is a spectacular and fitting tribute to the 16 and 1/2 million who served in World War II and those 400,000 who never made it back to American soil. Thank you again for your time.
Thank you very much. Mr. McInerney?
Thank you, Mr. Commissioner, Commissioners, staff. Thank you very much for having me here today before to speak on the memorial and this very important issue to me, my family, and so many veterans. I'm Lieutenant General Tom McInerney. I served for 35 years in the United States Air Force and retired in 1994 as the Assistant Vice Chief of Staff of the Air Force. I know that you all play the critical role in determining the outcome of the National Eisenhower Memorial. And I am here today to thank you and tell you that the memorial means so much to me, my family, and so many other veterans who served and fought under General Eisenhower's leadership. Like General Eisenhower, my dad, my four brothers, and I graduated from the United States Military Academy at West Point. And with the exception of my late twin brother, we all served under President Eisenhower. Dad served in the European Theater of Operations under Ike during World War II, from 1944 to 1945, in England, France, and Germany. He told us many stories of Ike and the fact that we won in Europe because of his leadership and his decisive decision to mount the D-Day invasion. This great man, this supreme leader of the Allied Forces, is but one of the many aspects that we are honoring with this memorial. During the Cold War, my brother Jim shot down a Russian MiG-15 over North Korea in 1955 while President Eisenhower was our leader. When my two brothers and I were cadets at West Point during Eisenhower's presidency, we marched in the same parade field that Cadet Eisenhower marched on, and we attended, studied in the same classrooms. When we were commissioned, we proudly served under our first commander in chief, President Dwight David Eisenhower, the other aspect of the man we're honoring today. In so many ways, Eisenhower is an important part of our family's history, and when we tell our stories to the next generation, we will do so there at the memorial that brings him to life. My son will be married soon, and I can't wait to take my grandchildren to visit the Eisenhower Memorial, to show him how a great man emerged from the American landscape and changed the course of history. I want my grandchildren to know that they can look at how one man achieved greatness and realize that they can do that as well. I also understand that the memorial, when completed, will bring about $40 million to the district each year, so not only will we relive our history, but it will also grow the economy. I thank you for allowing me to appear before you today. Please know that there are millions of us who individually and as families have been touched by Dwight David Eisenhower. Know, too, that we appreciate all the work that you and your staff have put forward in approving this important memorial to our nation and a great man. Thank you very much.
Thank you, General, very much. And our last speaker is Ms. Ross.
I'm Sharice Ross, and I'm speaking on behalf of the U.S. Department of Education and Secretary Arne Duncan. Chairman Bryant, the U.S. Department of Education appreciates the Eisenhower Memorial Commission's continuing hard work and dedication to the design of the new memorial. We thank you for your efforts to seek the input of our staff and incorporate much of their feedback into your plans. Although we know that no memorial or design could ever address all of the ideas, views, and concerns of all interested individuals, we are grateful for being included in this process. We are eager to continue to work with you as the planning and preparations for the memorial progress to maximize the potentially positive relationship between the memorial space and the front of the department space. We recognize that the memorial design creates a new front door for the department with a planned urban park and pedestrian promenade. Additionally, a large number of visitors will be drawn to the memorial, and we hope that the promenade will give the department new opportunities to engage with the public and inform visitors about our work. We request that the commission continue to work with the department to seek its input throughout the planning, construction, and implementation to minimize, to the extent possible, any potential negative impact that these activities may have on our work and the morale of our employees. Once again, we thank you for your flexibility and thoughtfulness throughout this process and your commitment to continue to work with us. We look forward to welcoming the memorial to our neighborhood. Sincerely, Arne Duncan.
Thank you, Ms. Ross, very much. That ends public comment. We'll return the matter to the commission. We've had a presentation on both the street closure and the final design approval, proposal. We can take discussion, we can treat it all as one big discussion, both elements. When and if you are ready for a motion, your first motion should be on the design, which would be Item 5D. Questions or comments, and motions are in order at any time. Mr. Shaw?
Just have a question about the issue raised by Mr. Schubau related to the lighting at night and the reflection. Has there been any exploration on that as well, or any analysis on that?
I believe it's been, I mean, primarily discussed in the Section 106 forum. There have been no additional studies specifically with regard to reflection.
Did they respond with the, did the memorial commission respond with the alternate drawing that showed the request from SHIPOs? Are you aware of that?
No. The Park Service responded essentially that the tapestry has been studied extensively through the 106 process in previous meetings. They've looked at different configurations, sizes, and that overall that removing an extra bay would have, what the Park Service said, was harmed to the design. So that was their official response, and then the consultation continued from there.
Yeah, I'm just going to say exactly that. We looked, it had been examined, different versions of the tapestry had been examined at earlier stages in the design, and so this wasn't really a new concept. It was a new version of, you know, of the latest concept, but it has something that, it was something that was considered previously, but it was, it would have pretty much ruined the design concept, so it was not viable. The design team wouldn't support it. We wouldn't support it.
I can also add that the SHIPO, in their final comments, stated that they didn't consider that the additional study was necessary or needed.
Further discussion or questions? We also have, if you have questions with the design team, you also have the design team here.
I would just move approval of Item 5D, the design for the Eisenhower Memorial.
Item 5D, which is the final design approval, has been moved and seconded. Is there further discussion on that? Going once, Ms. Wright?
Well, I got a turn. On my mic, I should know better. We've had a long history, and I've had my say, like everyone else, many times, each time, so I won't repeat myself, other than to say that GSA continues to support enthusiastically the design and site plans because we think it's good architectural design, we think it's good landscape design, we think it's good urban design, and even preservation and planning. And we, and in so doing, it's good for the entire southwest neighborhood and specifically for our assets which surround the site. Having said that, I want to pick up on something that Beth Meyer, Commissioner on the Fine Arts Commission, said in June when final review was given by CFA. She asserted rebutting statements made in that meeting that, indeed, it is appropriate and desirable to create art of our time in the design of a memorial. And she specifically invoked that phrase, "art of our time." That's something that made me start to think. I've been thinking about this for a long time. I was at NEA during the Maplethorpe days, when the culture wars of the 90s were sort of resuscitated, an age-old controversy about what "art of our time" means and how appropriate is it. And it has been, we've had a long history in America of the design of memorials and colliding with "art of our time." And I would recommend for those who are unfamiliar with the history to have a little glimpse at Michael Kamen's book called Visual Shock. It's just one chapter where he addresses this, but he's not even an art historian, and it's a, it's a social phenomenon, and it's quite interesting. What we've all been experiencing for the last 18 years on this memorial design is not at all unfamiliar. In any event, I took off, as it happens, a couple of weeks after the CFA hearing, and I found myself thinking a lot about this idea. And I think, for me, her invocation of "art of our time" underscores a specific question about which we have heard much conjecture and which we may never be able to fully answer with any certainty, and that is, well, what would President Eisenhower have thought of this design? So I thought, okay, I should sort of look into this, and it didn't take me very long to find to find a quote that, for me at least, goes a long way to settling this issue of what he thought about "art of our time." On the occasion of the Museum of Modern Art's 25th anniversary in October of 1954, he was asked to make remarks at the celebration. Now, mind you, this is 1954, the 25th anniversary of MoMA, not hardly a bastion of conservatism. And he agreed to deliver the keynote address, in effect, for that event. Now, "art of our time" in 1954 is abstract expressionism, which even art historians know had won a hard-fought battle to be the preeminent "art of our time" throughout the '50s eventually and into the '60s, and came to dominate international art for decades, and is by some said to be the first truly American style. So that is what "art of our time" meant to Eisenhower when he made the following remarks. I have to read this off my phone, so forgive me for a second. So, it's short. "On this, the quarter-century mark of the Museum of Modern Art, I am very happy to send my warm greetings to all its associates and friends. To me, in this anniversary, there is a reminder to all of us, an important principle that we should ever keep in mind. This principle is that freedom of the arts is a basic freedom, one of the pillars of liberty in our land. For our republic to stay free, those among us with the rare gift of artistry must be able freely to use their talent. Likewise, our people must have unimpaired opportunity to see, to understand, to profit from our artists' work. As long as artists are at liberty to feel with high personal intensity, as long as our artists are free to create with sincerity and conviction, there will be healthy controversy and progress in art. Only thus can there be opportunity for a genius to conceive and to produce a masterpiece for all mankind." And then he goes on to remark about the opposite environment in tyranny. So, I don't think, I'm not implying or stating in any way that that quotation or that set of remarks, more than any other conjecture that we've heard as to whether or not Eisenhower himself would like this design. But surely he exhibits a modern sensibility, and it's not too much of a leap to infer that we, he would have applauded the ideas embedded in and celebrated in what is inarguably a modern design and art of our time, indeed. So, I would invoke his own words in urging my colleagues to vote yes, and let's get on with this. I agree, it's taken too long, but memorial design has a habit of doing that, and again, we are not alone in that. Thank you.
Other comments?
I would say something, but I don't think there's much to say after that, so I appreciate it. Look forward to voting in favor.
In that speech, she opposed abstract expressionism.
You're out of order. Ms. Wright, Ms. White?
White. I am so struck by your eloquence, Commissioner Wright, and I really appreciate the thoughtfulness that you always bring to these issues. And as you know, I've struggled with this project. I've been very clear that my concern has always been about the scale. I didn't support the preliminary plan, but I do respect the process, and I think that the staff of the National Capitol Planning Commission are rigorous defenders of public space. We have very thoughtfully approached the design principles and whether I agree with every single one of them. I don't know that deferring action on this really gains anyone anything. I think if, I'm not suggesting we revisit that decision or defer the vote, I just wanted to say on record that I really respect the recent decision of the Commission on Fine Arts. I hope I am wrong when it comes to this notion of scale. I've also noted that I admire greatly and respect the work of Frank Gehry, and I appreciate the difficult decisions that he and his team made to remove those side panels. They were very integral to the original design concept, and that's a big concession. I appreciate the changes that have been made to the landscape plan that improved the experience of the open space and the improvements to the LBJ promenade space. And this is, this is an incredibly tough site, and the other issues notwithstanding is whether or not you like the design, but the task to strike a balance between establishing a presidential memorial on a site that's so constrained and guided by the Lanfonte Plan and recognizing its historic setting. I mean, I do have great appreciation for the design team trying to strike those changes. So, I do want us to move forward with the vote, and again, I really hope I'm wrong about the scale. I'm always willing to be wrong. There are things I like about the design, but I think that our commission has to move forward on whether or not they've met the design principles that we put forward, and I think in large part they have, and I just wanted to share those comments.
Thank you.
I just want to echo that, that I'm new to the, to this process, and that it's been going on for a while, but I want to respect that, that principles were laid out, the dialogues continued. The tenant for the Department of Education, I was really concerned about them being impacted, so hearing it from Secretary Duncan, and so regardless of my opinion about the memorial itself, the idea that we laid out a framework and a process that was followed, and the staff has done some rigorous understanding over time, is the space I feel like that I have to consider when evaluating proposals, more on the process piece than on the actual, my personal opinion on the memorial itself.
Sensing no additional comment, we have before us the final approval of the site and building plan, which is Item 5D. All in favor of the EDRs presented, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose no?
No.
One no. And then we have before us also Item 5C, which is the street closure, avenue closure, and jurisdiction transfer. Is there any, is there a motion on that?
It's been moved.
It's been moved and seconded. Any further discussion on that? Hearing none. All in favor of Item 5C, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose no?
No.
One no. The next item is the final site and building plans for the Vietnam Veterans Memorial Visitor
All right. The next project on the agenda is also submitted by the National Park Service on behalf of the Vietnam Veterans Memorial Fund. It is the final site and building plans for the Vietnam Veterans Memorial Visitor Center. The project site, which is outlined here in red, is located on a portion of the Lincoln Memorial grounds within the larger context of the National Mall. Here's a closer look at the site. It is bound by Constitution Avenue on the north, Henry Bacon Drive on the east, Lincoln Memorial Circle to the south, and 23rd Street on the west. The Vietnam Veterans Memorial and Constitution Gardens are located directly to the east of the project site. Here are some existing conditions of the site. The larger photo is looking south towards the Lincoln Memorial, and the smaller is looking south, standing on the Henry Bacon Drive sidewalk. There is an existing food concession kiosk on the site, and the remaining portion of the site is open space that includes recreational fields. This is another view of the site, looking north towards Constitution Avenue, and in the background is the American Pharmacists Association Building. I'm just going to spend a few minutes providing some background on the project and previous commission actions. Congress authorized the visitor center in 2003. The authorizing legislation specifies several things, that the center must be built underground, that NCPC and CFA have approval authority for the project under the Commemorative Works Act, but that final approval cannot be withheld, that the center can be sited in the reserve without any additional approvals, and also that the size of the center must be limited to what is needed to educate the public about the Vietnam Veterans Memorial and the Vietnam War. And finally, that at this time, CWA was amended to allow NCPC and the U.S. Commission of Fine Arts to develop site-specific design guidelines. So, NCPC and CFA approved the site in 2006. At the time of approval, the commission recognized both the importance of the project's goals to educate the public regarding the Vietnam War and the memorial, but also the challenge of building on the historic grounds of the Lincoln Memorial and protecting the existing open space of the National Mall. The commission, as well as other stakeholders, including CFA, recognized that the visitor center should be secondary to visiting the memorial and that the center should not detract from the memorial. To mitigate the potential impacts on the Lincoln Memorial grounds and the surrounding context with its site approval, this commission and CFA adopted a set of design guidelines that could be used as a tool as the design evolved. There were a total of 14 design guidelines that covered a variety of issues, including minimizing the visibility of the center from the Lincoln Memorial, the Vietnam Veterans Memorial, and the surrounding streets. The guidelines also spoke to minimizing the impact on the landscape, that lighting should not interfere with adjacent memorials, to minimize paving, that no new parking should be provided, and that there should only be a single entrance for visitors in service, that a tree protection plan was required, and that the recommendations of the Lincoln Memorial Cultural Landscape Report should be implemented. And finally, there were restrictions on the use of guardrails and perimeter security. There was also one additional mitigation measure that was incorporated into NCPC's finding of no significant impact under the National Environmental Policy Act, and that was to reconstruct the playing fields that would be lost within a half mile of the project So, in 2007, the commission reviewed a concept design for the project. At that time, the project consisted of an underground facility as specified in the legislation, and it was organized around a central courtyard that you see here. The idea of the courtyard was that it would allow fresh air and light into the building and minimize the need for air intake grills or other equipment on the surface, which would thereby reduce visual impacts on the, of the building. And the overall concept of the courtyard has remained throughout the project. At this time, the center featured the design set of long linear skylights, and in order to gain access to the facility, a long walkway was provided off of Constitution Avenue and then another entrance off of Henry Bacon Drive. So at this time, the commission provided comments that the project was consistent with several design guidelines, or was not consistent, sorry, with several design guidelines due to its visibility from the, from the Lincoln Memorial, Constitution Avenue, 23rd Street, and Henry Bacon Drive. The commission also indicated that the courtyard and system of skylights intruded into the landscape and that the visibility of these elements should be reduced. The commission also asked at that time that the applicant reduce the overall size of the building, or scale of the building. In 2009, the applicant returned to the commission with a revised concept. The size of the center had been reduced, and the commission noted the improvements to the project. And while the commission, the commission found that the project satisfied some of the design guidelines, there were several that were still not satisfied. The commission asked the applicant to address four specific items to reduce the visibility and overall impact of the center on the landscape, and those four items essentially included eliminating the walkway from Constitution Avenue, to eliminate the skylights, to reduce the size of the courtyard opening, and design the center in a way that would not require a complex system of guardrails. So in response to the commission's comments, as well as comments from other agencies and stakeholders, the applicant revised the design. So as you can see in this image, the long linear skylights were eliminated, as well as the pathway from Constitution Avenue. The building remained underground, and a courtyard that you can see in the center of the lawn here remained as part of the design. However, access was provided only off of Henry Bacon Drive sidewalk and was organized around this curvilinear path. In addition, there was a set of stairs directly off of Henry Bacon and a retaining wall in this location here. With this design changes, with these design changes, the impact of the center was considerably minimized, including its footprint and impact on the landscape. In terms of the guardrails, a green roof was incorporated into the design that's located in this area here, and at the edge of that green roof, a horizontal rail, which you see here, was, was designed to keep people from approaching the edge and falling. The advantage to this element was that it did not feature vertical elements like a traditional guardrail would. Another guardrail system was designed around the courtyard, which was based on the idea of a "ha-ha." A "ha-ha" is an architectural feature that was originally used in landscape design to create a barrier but also protect and preserve views, which is one of the reasons it was selected for this project. This revised design was advanced to the commission in 2012 for preliminary review, and the commission approved the project noting that all the design guidelines had been satisfied. The elimination of the linear skylights and walkway from Constitution Avenue was a significant improvement to the visual and physical impact the project would have on the surroundings, including both the Lincoln Memorial and the Vietnam Veterans Memorial. More recently, several months ago, CFA approved the final plans, which are before you today, for your final review and approval. I'm now going to walk through in more detail the design modifications that have been made since the commission's 2012 review. So following the commission's preliminary approval, MPS determined that an additional egress path was required, and a series of staff consultation meetings were held to determine the best way to integrate that path into the design. There were a variety of alternatives studied, but ultimately, the entry path, the curvilinear entry path, was modified so that there are now two points of entry off of Henry Bacon So following that consultation, the applicant returned to CFA. CFA provided comments that would lead to additional design refinements. CFA at that time noted the similarity in form of the visitor center to the memorial itself due to the two intersecting walls that are outlined here in red, and requested the applicant reconsider this form to make sure that the center was secondary to the memorial itself. CFA also questioned the elliptical form of the approach walkway. The applicant then developed a series of alternatives, including revisiting some of the earlier schemes which would have had, which, for example, would have required a switchback ramp or a larger impact, which would have had a larger impact on the landscape. Ultimately, the applicant returned to CFA with a design on the Ultimately, the applicant returned to CFA with the design on the right here, and at that time, CFA noted during the review that the applicant had addressed many of their concerns, especially with regard to the similarity to the memorial, and therefore, CFA granted a revised concept approval. So this option is essentially a refinement of the preliminary plans that the commission approved in 2012. So to summarize the major design changes that have been made, the retaining wall that was located adjacent to the entry stairs was eliminated and replaced with a grass berm. To accommodate that grass berm, the building had to be relocated on the site towards the north, and the horizontal rail element, which remains, had to increase in size by approximately 45 feet. In addition, the grass berm at the center was reshaped to be more of an organic shape that would fit within the larger context of the National Mall. So this diagram just indicates how the building was shifted in location from the previously approved plans that are shown in red. As I said, the building moved to the north approximately by 22 feet, and that required the increase in the horizontal rail, which is now approximately 250 feet long. So here you can see partial site plan in more detail, including the horizontal rail at the top, the additional egress path that was incorporated into the design, the grass berm at the center that was reshaped, and then the slope grass berm that's now adjacent to the entry stairs rather than the retaining wall. On the bottom right here is a section of, taken through the horizontal rail. The rail is going to be architectural concrete, is proposed to be light gray in color. Within that concrete structure, a metal frame with stainless steel cables will sit, and that's, it's not intended to be a surface for people to walk on, but rather will serve as an additional safety feature should someone walk across the lawn and approach the edge of the building. This rendering provides a good idea of the scale of the horizontal rail. As I've noted, this element has increased in size since the commission's preliminary approval. And while the elimination of the retaining wall has improved the project by reducing its similarity of the center to the memorial, the selection of the final finishes and color of this element was important to minimizing its visibility. Here you can see a comparison of the rail as it was proposed in 2012 and the final plans that are before you today. In exchange for the increase in size of the horizontal rail, the grass berm, which replaces the retaining wall, will help to minimize the presence of the building in the landscape. In addition, as the form of the visitor center has been differentiated from the memorial, the center will be secondary to the experience of visiting the memorial. However, given the length and size of the horizontal rail and its increase from the commission's preliminary review, staff has requested and the park service has agreed to continue to work with the design team and the appropriate review agencies regarding the finish and color of this element in order to reduce its visibility. So as part of the staff recommendation, we are noting that this additional consultation will continue. Next few slides highlight additional views to highlight the design changes that have been made since the commission's preliminary review. And here's the view of the final plans from Henry Bacon Drive. You can see the grass berm here on the left, and then the two entry points off of the Henry Bacon Drive sidewalk, and then the beginning of the curvilinear ramp that will bring you down below. This is an identical view of the preliminary design from 2012. You can see the top of the retaining wall that was originally proposed. This is a view at the bottom of the entry ramp towards the main entrance, and you can see the grass berm. This is in comparison, same view, sorry, the same view from the preliminary plans in 2012, which include the retaining wall. These images highlight how the elimination of the retaining wall is another significant improvement to the project and in terms of minimizing its impact of the building on the landscape. So as I discussed earlier, the commission found that the project satisfied the design principles with its preliminary approval in 2012. With the final plan, staff has confirmed that the intent of the design principles continued to be met. Detailed description of the design guidelines is in the staff report, but I will highlight a few of the guidelines which were of particular concern to the commission during its previous Several of the design guidelines speak to the visibility of the project from the surroundings, including the Lincoln Memorial and Vietnam Veterans Memorial. The project remains consistent with these guidelines as its visibility from these memorials has been minimized to a significant degree by eliminating the proposed skylights that were proposed in earlier designs, and also the elimination of vertical guardrails. While portions of the horizontal rail and the courtyard opening will be visible, these elements do not intrude on the surrounding view sheds. Staff recognizes that there's a balance between meeting the goal of the mission of the center to educate the public while designing a building that is sensitive for the grounds of the Lincoln Memorial. And so overall, the applicant has made significant improvements to the design, and the intent of the design guidelines have been met. Here you can see the same view of the project at night and the proposed lighting. The lighting has been kept to what is necessary for public safety and will not encroach on the Lincoln Memorial or Vietnam Veterans Memorial. Overall, the lighting has been designed to be differential to the surrounding context. This view from the path of the Vietnam Veterans Memorial shows that the visitor center or the top of the horizontal rail would only be minimally visible. Finally, with respect to the use of guardrails, the applicant has designed, as I've mentioned, two conditions which minimize the need for traditional or vertical guardrails that would likely have more of a significant visual impact than what is proposed in the final plans. Here you can see the horizontal rail along the edge of the green roof. It eliminates the need for, as I've said, vertical guardrails and serves to protect visitors from falling if they were to approach this edge. Second guardrail condition, you see a section of at the upper left here, is located around the courtyard opening, and while it's not completely concealed, it should not protrude significantly above the ground plane. As the design has evolved over the past few years, the number of guardrails has been significantly reduced, as requested by the commission in earlier reviews, and their visual and physical impact has been minimized. So with that, it's the executive director's recommendation to approve the final site and building plans for the Vietnam Veterans Memorial Visitor Center, to confirm that the final design is consistent with the design guidelines adopted during site selection, and to note that the park service will continue to work on the final finishes and color with the design team and appropriate review agency staff to ensure its compatibility with the surrounding context and minimize its imperants. That concludes my presentation.
Thank you, Ms. Hirsch. Another project's been a long time coming back to us. Any questions or comments for the project? Motion is in order.
I would move the EDR. I would move the EDR and thank the staff for their thorough work on this project over the years. It's been a long, long project. This was in its infancy when I walked in the door almost eight years ago, and it's nice to be getting to this point. So I appreciate everyone's efforts, the commission's, the staff, and my own staff, who worked on it very hard over the years as well. Second, the designing team as well.
It's been moved and seconded. Is there any further discussion or questions?
I just would comment, Mr. Chairman, that three, little over three years ago, we kicked off an effort, started an effort, helping to lead with federal government, an effort to, really with the primary objective as established by the Congress, to thank and honor our Vietnam veterans and their families for their service, sacrifice, and valor. Something that really didn't happen 50 years ago, it was a turbulent time. And yesterday, the leaders of the House and the Senate actually hosted about 500 Vietnam veterans and their families at Emancipation Hall with the ceremony to do just that, to really reinforce that effort. So the timing is a bit ironic, but wonderful that we're at this point. So thank you, Ms. Chairman.
Thank you. Since there's no further discussion, it's been moved and seconded. All in favor of the EDR CI?
Aye.
Opposed, no? Thank you very much. And the last item on the agenda, Ms. Hirsch can finally leave. Is item 5F, is the draft master plan for Marine Corps Base Quantico. We have Mr. Wile. The matter before us is approval of comments on the draft.
Okay, thank you. Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman, members of the commission. This is, as you stated, this is a draft master plan review for Marine Corps Base Quantico, located in Quantico, Virginia. The master plan submission is by the United States Marine Corps, in for commission review and comment. So the installation encompasses approximately 58,000 acres of land, located 35 miles south of Washington, D.C., approximately 20 miles north of Fredericksburg, Virginia. Here's a closer up of the installation, shown in white. It is bifurcated by the Route 1 I-95 corridor. A majority of the installation resides to the west of I-95, known as West Side. The smaller portion is known as Main Side, and that's along the shores of the Potomac River. The West Side portion is primarily dedicated for training, and the Main Side is the more densely developed portion of the installation. And this includes the Headquarters District and also the historic Barnett Downtown District. So the installation spans three different counties, Stafford County in the south, Falkir County in the west, and Prince William County in the north. This is a little unusual in that Prince William County resides within the national capital region. However, Stafford County and Falkir County are outside of the region. So NCPC has review authority over federal development within the Prince William County portion of the installation. So the installation, or excuse me, the master plan submission includes three documents, the draft master plan itself, a transportation management plan, and a bicycle and pedestrian mobility plan. The master plan is founded, is based on the vision statement shown before you, to protect training and education areas through proper growth management of compatible land uses, to preserve and conserve natural resources in the installation's historic character, and to implement the sustainable facility and infrastructure development patterns. Based on this vision statement, the Marines developed a number of master plan goals that are listed on the slide. Basically, these goals can be summarized through three different themes. The master plan is intended to evolve the installation into a more sustainable facility, to protect the installation's historic character and cultural assets, and also to preserve the installation's live fire and training mission. The master plan is designed to comply with the latest 2012 UFC installation master planning goals and objectives and policies, some of which are shown before you. The master plan is also designed to help the installation attain a number of sustainability goals and objectives, ranging from energy efficiency, water quality, air quality, and climate change. Three of the sections of the master plan, one of the sections is an existing conditions section. There are two future master plan components. The short-range component looks over the next few years to 2018, and the long-range component is a 20-year timeframe spanning out to 2035. Both of the future master plan components include a land use plan, a framework plan, and the framework plans separate the installation into smaller planning districts. And then with each, within each of these framework plans, there's an illustrative plan which shows the future development, a pattern and building footprints, and also a regulating plan which identifies specific land uses and development guidelines for each site, which, within each of the planning districts. Both of the components also include a circulation plan and a parks and open space plan. So in terms, oh, so this graphic shows the Main Side portion of the installation, and as an aside, you'll find that my presentation really focuses on the Main Side portion, since this is where a majority of our advisory review authority lies, as well as a majority of the installation's development. So I'll go through each of these small area planning districts very briefly. The Russell Road District is aligned along the Russell Road corridor. Basically, this has pockets of commercial and various developments along the north side of the road. The Headquarters District is predominantly administrative in use. There's a fully functional Marine Corps airfield located along the Potomac River. The Barnett Avenue, as I previously mentioned, this essentially serves as the installation's downtown area. Marine Corps University, this serves as the Marine Corps' graduate school. Chamber Village and Hospital Point, these are primarily administrative enclaves. The Purvis Road District, this encompasses a majority of the installation's residential neighborhoods. And the Museum District encompasses the well-known Marine Corps Museum Building that you have probably seen along I-95. Moving over to the West Side, the only planning district included in the Prince William County portion of the installation is Camp Upsher, which is a training, a training facility. So the master plan is based on several assumptions, a 2% annual population growth assumption over the next 20 years, which will result in a daytime population of approximately 43,000 people in 2035. The master plan also assumes, also projects out the parking ratios. It shows that the Main Side parking ratio will comply with applicable NCPC goal of 1 to 1.5 by 2018. And overall, in terms of the long term, the TMP and master plan show parking ratio goal compliance within the 1.5 to 2 range, depending on whether direct HOV hot lane access is provided or not in the future. So in terms of the existing conditions, the three largest land use categories are community support, shown in orange, open space, shown in green, and training range space, which is shown by the pinkish-orange. This is the Main Side. The West Side portion, predominantly, the predominant land use is training range space with some limited training campus and open space. And I'd like to point out that a majority of the development on Main Side is located right here in the southwest, excuse me, right here, within the southwest portion of the, here we go, of West Side. And this includes the FBI And, and this includes the FBI Academy and the DEA Academy as well. In terms of the existing roadway network, access to Main Side is provided through two gates, the main gate along Fuller Road and the Russell Road gate. This provides, this provides access to an internal primary-secondary roadway loop comprised of Fuller Road and Russell Road, Barnett Avenue, which provides access through the downtown area, and Purvis Road, which is identified as a secondary roadway, providing access to a majority of the installation's residential areas. Three gates provide access to the, the more developed West Side portion, or southern portion of the, the West Side area. And you can see access to Camp Upsher up here, and the very northern stretches is, is fairly, fairly limited to smaller tertiary roadways. Terms of existing bicycle and pedestrian circulation, there's some shared roadway facilities in the downtown, in the town of Quantico, which is technically separate from the Marine Corps base. There is a bike lane identified along Fuller Road. A majority of the circulation network consists of bicycle trails and pedestrian trails throughout the interior open space portion of Main Side. In terms of the existing cultural resources, the, the downtown Barnett area is identified as, as a historic district with multiple historic structures. So in terms of future conditions, the short-range land use identifies additional administrative space to help overcome the current deficit of administrative development on, on Quantico. Approximately six acres of storage area will be relocated to the West Side, and then that space will be backfilled with additional educational development within the Marine Corps University District. And this shows an expansion of a district known as Boswell's Corner with additional operational space. Terms of the long-range land use plan, there will be additional administrative area centering around the Headquarters District, a new residential development, additional storage area will be relocated to the West Side, and then this, this area will be backfilled with potential future commercial retail development in the future along Barnett Avenue. Roadway improvements, in terms of the short-term, there are a number of roadway improvements to try to increase capacity along Fuller Road and Russell Road to the Barnett Avenue downtown area on Main Side. And the long-range improvements really are, are, they're smaller-scale improvements intended to improve pedestrian and bicycle safety on the installation, as well as several place-making Pedestrian bicycle improvements, the lower right-hand graphic shows sidewalks along all the roadways on Main Side. And in terms of the future bicycle improvement, the big move really is to construct bicycle lanes along the, the internal primary loop road within Main Side, so along Fuller and Russell Roads, Purvis Road, and Barnett Avenue. I'd like to take an aside to point out that the Potomac Heritage National Scenic Trail is located in the facility, in the vicinity of this installation. The Potomac Heritage Trail is a multi-state trail spanning from, from Pennsylvania all the way down through the Washington region along the Potomac River. This currently terminates in close proximity to Quantico, and I'll note in a later Executive Director's recommendation that there, there are plans to hopefully expand the, the trail facility onto the grounds of Quantico in the future. So in terms of the future long-range planning district developments, starting with the Marine Corps University District, the intent here is to create a more pedestrian-oriented university-like Related to the Headquarters District, really the, the major moves here are to expand the amount of administrative space by approximately 250,000 to 300,000 square feet. Barnett Avenue, there are some projects located within the district, and again, the, Quantico intends to create a more pedestrian-friendly mixed-use district. I'd like to use this as an opportunity, as, as I reviewed the, the master plan, there were three projects that are contained within the master plan. However, these have not come before the commission for review at this time. The MCIA garage is already constructed, and this is listed as a short-term project in the master plan. So I'll, I'll speak to this in a later Executive Director's recommendation. The Hospital Point District and the, the Chamberlain Village districts are located directly adjacent to each other, and really the intent with these two districts are to construct additional administrative space. Russell Road District, there are two projects identified over the long-term. Actually, a fire station is the short-term project, and auto repair facility is a, a long-term project. And related to the Museum District, the long-term plans show a new hotel, an office building, and a warehouse facility. Here are two other projects that are currently under construction that are listed in the master plan, however, they were not submitted to NCPC for review. One is an expansion of the, the Marine Corps Museum Building. Another is a secondary meandering roadway, which connects Route 1 over here to the Marine Corps Museum Parking Area, known as the Heritage Parkway. As for the Camp Upsher District, the long-term plan is to demolish most of the buildings and reconstruct them, since they're, a lot of the buildings are, are obsolete and nearing their design life. So the staff analysis Executive Director's recommendation, I'll try to combine these two sections as, as much as possible to save time. The Executive Director's recommendation is divided into five major categories, starting with compliance. We support the district-based planning approach of the master plan and overall structure of the document, which is designed to comply with policies from the UFC, the new UFC 2012 installation master planning code. We note that NCPC has review authority for all plans and projects within the Prince William County portion of the Marine Corps Base Quantico. And we note that there are currently three projects within the master plan that were not reviewed by the commission, and so we, we remind Marine Corps Base Quantico to continue to submit future projects to NCPC for review. In terms of employee parking, we note that the Quantico master plan and TMP are designed to adhere to the NCPC parking ratio goals with and without HOV, HOT facility direct connections. But we recommend that Quantico strive to attain a 1 to 2 goal for the Main Side to support the 2012 UFC installation master planning policies, the installation's ambitious plan to improve onsite bicycle and pedestrian facilities, planned onsite, offsite transportation improvements, and also the installation's employees who reside within the surrounding area. I'd like to note that approximately 50% of Quantico's employees reside within the three nearby counties of Stafford, Prince William, and Spotsylvania. Related to the Transportation Management Plan, we recommend that Quantico revise the TMP to include short-term and long-term travel mode share goals in support of the installation's 1 to 1.5 long-range parking goal for West Side, and NCPC's recommended 1 to 2 goal for the Main Side. And this is to help organize some of the programs and, and outlined in the TMP to, to try to attain that more stringent 1 to 2 parking ratio goal for Main Side. Related to the master plan, as previously noted, the master plan is intended to help the installation attain a number of sustainability goals and objectives. We recommend that the final master plan go a step further and identify areas that would be most suitable for various stormwater management areas, as well as green energy production areas, in support of the master plan's various sustainability goals. We would also like to see a more detailed climate adaptation section, if possible, in the final master plan as well. In terms of improvements to future land uses and, and development patterns, these can really be divided into three different categories. The master plan does a good job of, of consolidating some of the surface parking lots in the long-term. However, staff, you know, we recognized a, a number of other opportunities where parking, it was not apparent why parking was provided, and, and we were wondering if there, there were additional opportunities to continue removing surface parking, in particular in the Headquarters District and Chamberlain Village districts. In terms of the roadway circulation system, there were several opportunities that, that staff identified where apparently internal roadways did not have any future development showed, reflected directly adjacent to these roadways, and so we thought there could possibly be an opportunity to remove several of these roadways as well. We also noticed several locations where the, the master plan showed impervious surface areas without any apparent reason. So again, we identified several locations where impervious areas could be potentially removed in, in close proximity to the Potomac waterfront. We recommend that Quantico conduct further more detailed planning to reinforce Barnett Avenue as the installation's main street through a consistent streetscape, infill development and cohesive characters appropriate within the context of the historic district. We recommend that Quantico locate future Russell Road development directly adjacent to or on existing development sites. And we recommend that Quantico reconfigure the future museum district to provide a higher-quality direct pedestrian connection between the future hotel and museum building, without forcing people to have to cross the, the parking lot as, as the, the shortest route. Terms of future coordination, we have three requests that Quantico provide written responses to all referral comments. We request that Quantico work with the National Park Service and NCPC staff to determine how the Potomac Heritage National Scenic Trail could complement the installation operations and try to develop an appropriate alignment onto the installation. And we also request that Quantico commit to working with Stafford, Prince William, and Spotsylvania Counties to try to establish additional transit, bicycle, carpool, vanpool, and pedestrian facilities and programs to try to encourage more non-single-occupant-vehicle commuting from nearby communities. And the last, the remaining four or five slides basically show the, the executive director's recommendation, which is included in your EDR. I'll just note that this is outlined in the same five categories that I just previously went through. These are the compliance-related recommendations. These next two slides specify the, the recommendations related to the master plan that I just covered, one employee parking recommendation, a TMP recommendation, and the three future coordination recommendations. And that concludes my presentation. I'm available to answer any questions, and Quantico also has representation here as well.
Thank you, Mr. Wile. You went through 102 slides on a 65-page EDR quite efficiently.
Thank you.
Very nicely done. In your dialogue with installation master planners, the recommendations are, everybody's sort of nodding heads and such?
Yes, yes.
Okay. Any questions? Mr. Rhodes, you have, I'm sorry.
I have a question. What? I don't understand why the parking ratio ambitions are so anemic. I mean, by 2035, we're going to get to 1 to, 1 to, 1.5 to 2? Is that, is there a reason?
Well...
Fairly remote area.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Having worked on Quantico four years, that's not the place that a lot of people are transiting to in a major form and major fashion, like they are coming into the National Capital Region.
Right.
You can gather people coming from many different agencies that'll get here and easily pick up and collect. It's just not nearly as convenient. Plus, you've got a percentage of them that live there aboard base.
Right. Well, that's why I'm asking.
But they don't live right next door. It's a very topographical area, so where the housing is, is up and down and around, and there's not a lot of, right now, there's not a lot of necessarily sidewalks and other things that'll make it really easy. When you look at Purvis Road, where that area is, that's a two-lane road that, that works through there. It's not necessarily a dangerous two-lane road, but it's also not a wide one that's built with a bicycle paths and other things. So it just, it's not tremendously conducive to gathering up a lot of folks and coming in in mass transit.
So that was my other question. Are there ambitions? What's the current...
You heard the bicycle and, and transit plans, and I'm sure they can tell you, they've got, they, they hope as they widen Russell Road, hell, I'm not at Quantico, I don't know what I'm talking about this, but, just because I know a lot of folks who are there. But they're widening Russell Road, they're working it, and then they hope in the long-term plan to maybe improve some of those, but that still will be very localized.
Okay, that's enough. Just asking.
Well, but he came up. He's gonna have...
Okay. Well, just to address that, yeah, right now, and...
Good, identify yourself.
Sorry, my name's Kirk Nelson. I'm the Assistant Chief of Staff for Installation Environment for Marine Corps Base Quantico. So we do have in our vision, we really want to capitalize on, you know, more multimodal transportation, getting people out of single occupancy vehicles. We recognize right now that we, you know, it, it will be difficult to start off with, because right now, there really isn't a mass transit option, except for we do have the VRE. VRE station stops in the town of Quantico, so we are trying to provide a, a transportation around the base right now. It noted in there that, that we have a, a bus that comes in. The bus actually doesn't stop at, on the base at all. It comes into the town, does a stop, and then leaves. So it's kind of for VRE ridership, for people out in the community to come in. So we, we've been trying to work with, with the, the bus systems for the local communities. A lot of them kind of say that there's not really economically, it doesn't make sense for them to provide a bus service through the base at this point. So we're still trying to work with the outside communities. The other thing, we are kind of trying to, trying to improve all the bicycle and pedestrian areas. One of the things that'll improve a lot is, right now, the Route 1 corridor really doesn't have bicycle paths. Prince William County's brought it down to pretty much our Main Side gate, and so we've got bike lanes coming in on that side. We're working on it inside the base, but once they get off on the southern part, where the majority of our people live, there's no bike lanes after that. So once you get on the outside community, it pretty much goes from, you know, the white stripe on the shoulder to gravel. So it's not really a safe condition right now. So, but we're trying to improve that, we're working with the outside community. We just did a joint land use study with the outside counties to help approve the partnership. And it was interesting, at all the community meetings we went to, the public forums, we were expecting to hear comments about noise and, and artillery and things like that, and most of the comments we received were about transportation. So we know that's an interest for us, it's an interest for the outside communities, it is something that we're really working on.
Thank you.
Is there a motion?
No motion.
It's been moved, and Mr. Rhodes has seconded.
Seconded.
You've heard the discussion. All in favor of the EDR as presented, say aye.
Aye.
Those no?
Right.
Abstention. Okay. It's been a consequential day. A lot of big projects...
And a short one.
A lot of, relatively, a lot of noteworthy projects that have been before us for a while, and a lot of good work at Quantico, so thank you all for your indulgence, and we will not meet next month, but we'll see you in September.